Everything that you've given us, dear Lord, thank you for the snow today, dear Lord. And dear Lord, thank you for our teachers, dear Lord, and our bus drivers and our clerical workers and everyone that's involved in our school system. We pray that you will go with us tonight, watch over us, guide us through this meeting, pray that everything, everyone will see each other as an equal. And dear Lord, we pray that you would just watch over us, guide and direct us. And we will carefully give you all the praise in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for pledge. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you everyone for showing up. Well, we got a full house of principals tonight. So that's great to see. Our student ambassadors tonight are, and you can just wave when I introduce you, so we know who you are, Phoenix Thomas, L. Arnold, and Carrington Senior. Did I get that right? Okay. All right. Welcome. It's nice to have three. Wow, that's a full house. All right. Our recognition tonight is Kristy Klaus. And Mr. Parsley, I believe you're going to do the recognition? Or have the honor?
All right. So this evening, we want to recognize Coach Kristy Klaus. Ms. Klaus graduated from Manchester Central High School in 1985 and began to teach at Coffey County Central High School. I believe it was transitioning from Manchester Central High School to Coffey County Central in 1991. And the following year, she taught science and still does. She's taught physical world concepts, physical science. She's even taught a little bit of algebra, she tells me. And I don't recall that, but she does. And after that first year, she came into a role, coaching cheer. And she began to coach freshmen, did that for a short time. And this is now her 34th year in cheer coaching. Ms. Klaus has been coached for quite some time for the all-state cheerleading team. She has a hand in selecting that team and coaching that team at the East-West All-Star Game. Ms. Klaus is also an officer in the Tennessee Cheerleading Coaches Association. She's been treasurer in that association. And she is currently president and director of that statewide association. So you can see she's very well respected throughout the state with respect to cheerleading and many other things as well. And we are just so glad that she works in our district. This is her 35th year. And she has worked at Coffey County Raider Academy since the year that it opened and worked at Coffey County Central prior to that. I miss her being in my building every day, but do get to see her from time to time with cheerleading and things like that. And again, just want to recognize her. She received a distinguished service award from the T double S double A just a week or two ago. And so there was some local publicity about that. And we want to give her more attention tonight.
All right. So ever come on.
Ms. Klaus, come up here. And you all may have some questions for her, so I'm going to step aside, if that's okay.
Sure. Let's surely get your photo. Anybody have any on the board have questions, your kudos, your pats on the back?
I have a little bit of a kudos. So back in July, she and the other coaches took the girls, I know this because my daughter's on the squad, took the girls to camp at Tech. And they were recognized there, had some very impressive awards. And I had planned to come to the meeting the Monday after and announce that to everyone. And I had a family emergency and I didn't get to be here that night. So I thought I would bring that to you got your attention, because I didn't get to do it that night. But they placed, tell me if I get this wrong, second in camp routine, right? First in spirit routine? Is that right? First in cheer? And they got, they were awarded the traditions award. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Traditions award is awarded to like a program that just exemplifies a tradition that's passed along from year to year. So it's really one of my favorite awards.
Yeah, it's really cool. So but I just wanted to let everybody know that because I wanted to do that back in July and then I didn't get to come that night. But I'm so proud of you and all the girls and all the hard work that all y'all do.
They did a great job.
Thank you.
I have a former cheerleader on the board, too.
You do?
Yeah.
As someone who was coached by you, I have to tell you, I lived in complete fear of disappointing you. I did not want to make you upset. I wanted you to always be proud of me. And I didn't always love feeling like that, but now I'm so thankful for it. And I'm so proud of you. So congratulations.
I'm proud of you, too.
All right. Mr. Parsley?
Ms. Klaus, we have a gift for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I could share something. One of the things that Ms. Klaus shared with me, as I inquired with her today, I was just curious about how many cheerleaders she thought she might have coached at our school over all of these years. And I think you said maybe somewhere in the vicinity of 300.
Wow.
You know, so it's really amazing when you consider the impact that she has undoubtedly had over all of these years with these kids. So we're appreciative of her.
I might say something. The Klaus family has really impacted kids in Coffey County schools. Your dad, I'm sure all of you know that, but her dad was Principal North Coffey for years. And he gave me my first job. So that's telling how old I am. But he was a wonderful guy and he did a lot for the school and for our county. And you're doing the same thing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate your mom coming with you tonight as well. And probably thank you for everything you've done.
And Coach Neil's here as well, who's my partner in crime.
Ms. Klaus, your longevity and the positive impact, thank you so much for investing in our young people. You have to be passionate about others to take the time, not only just to teach for that amount of years, but to invest after school and pour your heart into others. Speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm also, actually, the last two years, I've served on the TACCA Board of Directors as well. So I get to interact with coaches from all other sports as well.
Awesome.
Well, we need to get a picture or two to commemorate the occasion. So I think Matthew's going to grab one. And Melissa, you got to take, okay, so turn around and we'll get your picture.
Yeah.
Oh.
Get your picture in there.
So proud of you, Ms. Klaus. Congratulations.
All right. Next up, we have, bring the microphone back up. And Dr. Cornelius is going to give us our TESA accountability report.
Yes, sir.
Quarterly. Okay. Or right there, it's fine.
I promised the Shire Two principal that I would leave it right here before we get out on the main stage here. But wherever you want to.
They want it right there.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Cornelius.
Let me say, Dr. Cornelius, it's nice to see you back in one of these meetings. We missed having you.
Oh, yeah. I have been very, very busy every time that we've had one. But yes, thank you. Thank you a lot. I'm not near as exciting as what Ms. Klaus is. So I might as well be interested in that. But the TESA accountability report for the year and what we have to submit, you know, to the state. We have, as you know, goal number, goal number one is locked in legislatively. That's your third grade goal. Now, we did improve overall by one percentage point from the previous year. Okay? So the 25-26 goal is also legislatively locked in. It's at 51.5. So there's a lot of ground to make in the 25-26 school year from 33.5 up to 51.5. And like I told you before and shared with you before, we did have one of the schools that did get up to that level this year, which actually helped us overall to increase that little bit, that little bit amount. So that, we were pleased with that. Goal number two has changed because the department, that's Department of Ed, the department and the Accountability Division is scrapping or, you know, getting rid of ready graduate, the ready graduate metric. So the new metric, or it's not a new metric, it's actually college career ready. It's called CCR. They're replacing that. They're going to not have two, will just have one. Now, it's actually a little bit easier to meet the CCR than it is the ready grad because our ASVAB test under the CCR metric stands alone. In other words, as long as the student scores 31 or above on the ASVAB, they will meet the CCR metric. There's nothing else tied to it. And the difference, another difference in the CCR metric versus the ready grad, ready grad required enrollment in EPO, the early post-secondary courses. CCR requires that the credit actually be earned. So it goes up a notch above the enrollment. So we have to have, we have to have a credit earned, whether that's by exam or whether that's simply by completing the course and earning the credit. Because some of them, your state dual credit courses, which are phasing out too, that we're in the last, I think, the last couple of years of that or maybe the last year, they're phasing out and we'll be left with what we call local dual credit by exam after that. And then, so goal two is being, and goal five, goal two is being replaced by goal number five. So the way the department wants us to do it is just say that we're putting goal number two to rest. And not every district had a ready grad goal. We did. And so we are replacing that with CCR, which is goal five and those accompanying metrics. And we hit, even on ready grad, we still hit, I think we hit a four, we hit four points on the ready grad. And we still do very well, we still do very well on CCR. I think we're at, four is the highest. I think we're at three. I think we may be at three points on that one, if you researched me correctly. So that's, that's good, too. Goal three and goal four are unchanged. That's our middle school goal with the eighth grade emphasis. Now ironically, and it's statistically not impossible, but it's, you know, usually doesn't happen where you remain static from one year to the next completely. But we did with eighth grade ELA. Eighth grade math had improved by three tenths of a percent last year over the, over the previous year. So naturally, we do want to see more movement in those areas. Still, the eighth grade, that one is pretty much a predictor of how a student will do in ninth grade when credits begin to count, especially with their math and their ELA. And kind of, it can also be an indicator of how to help advise a student and maybe steer them in some courses that they might be interested in if they have an aptitude towards that. So we feel like that's still an important goal to have. And we will see how we do, we will see how we do this spring. And hopefully, we'll do much, much better and keep on, keep on improving. So that is it. And I just ask you if you have any questions. And then I need you to help me out. I need you to approve this for me, too. So if I can get your approval on the TESA accountability report. But that's it. That's, that's all I have for you.
What do we need to do to give you approval? We need to?
Just do your thing, Ms. Jones, Ms. Peacock, Ms. Matthews, you know, just whatever you want, however you want to do it.
So do we actually need to?
Please.
So we would need to add an agenda item?
Yes.
Agenda item. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
No, that's different.
Okay.
So when we do the consent agenda and all that stuff, we add an agenda item and we'll approve this?
That's fine. That's good. That's good. That'll be fine.
Okay.
Then we can ask questions after we get them.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can do that, too. So, yeah, you'll probably need to stick around to that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Because you'll be agenda item 16 at this point.
Okay. All right. All right. No problem. Thank you.
However, we're striking two.
It's in third page.
Well, we got two other ones. Do we have any public comment? Nope. No public comment. All right. And speaking of which, to answer Mr. Gillies' question, we got some, we're going to do the call to order. We have no public comment. We will cover additions and changes to the agenda because we got a lot of them tonight. But first, we're going to do the principal reports. So have you guys drawn lots to see who's going to come first?
It's been a while since I've been here, so I guess that's why they threw me up here. So, all right, I have notes. It's a busy time of year. I probably say that anytime I come up here, no matter what time of year. We had our Fall Festival in conjunction with our PTO a few weeks ago. It's a significant fundraiser for them to fund the budget for the, for the school year to help support students, staff, and the school. We were featured on Thunder Radio. We, I brought some folks with me on Connecting Coffey County with Tiffany. Had my principal for a day on there. He was our top fundraiser for our smart card fundraiser. So he got to be principal for the day before fall break. Ann got to be on the radio. So he was very excited, a little first grader named Elijah. And so, yeah, he, he was proud that, so we ordered lunch in that day. And I said, buddy, what do you want for lunch? He said, chocolate chip waffles. So, okay, I'm going to order some bacon with it because your mom will probably be mad I didn't give you protein. So, so, yeah, we did that. Our basketball players were also on the radio with me. And we're in the middle of our basketball season. Our, our boys team had a big win over College Street this weekend. So we've moved to three and two there and very proud of those boys. And then our girls, we have a small but mighty team. And so they're, they're huffing out there. They don't get a lot of relief because there's only a few of them. But they're doing great as well. Just came off our in-service day on Halloween. We had a full day focused on student work and how to, how to best utilize and analyze that student work. And it was a great day with our literacy coach and our math coach working with our staff, our certified staff, our paras, our teacher aides. So it was all hands on deck day. We also crowned an interim ultimate warrior. We do a contest just about every staff development or in-service day. But our ultimate warrior, Ms. Welch, was at North Coffey that day. We share her with North Coffey. So she wasn't there to defend her title. So our, our third grade teacher of the year, Mr. Eaton, is our interim warrior. But he's going to have to go face Ms. Welch for it later on to figure out who the true ultimate warrior is. We have our Veterans Day program tomorrow at 8:30. We also host a breakfast for veteran families, our family members who come. But Ms. Led Singer does an excellent job organizing our Veterans Day program. And speaking of her, she also was awarded the SBCO grant to start Honor Choir, which will benefit many elementary students throughout the county. And so looking forward to that. I think that's all I got. And that's all before the turkey got in the oven. So we got, we'll hit the ground running tomorrow and see what else we can do.
All right.
I follow your Facebook page, the East Coffey page. Y'all are doing some really fun things for those kids. And it's just a great community out there. And I love seeing how happy.
We have a lot of fun, so.
It's very obvious.
Dr. Cornelius does a lot of our Facebook, so I don't have to.
It's amazing.
All right. Mr. Parsley, going out of order.
I thought I'd share a couple of items from the high school. Our ambassadors have quite a few things to share. We're in transition with sports seasons and we have lots of club activities going on. But want everyone to be aware that we do have a Veterans Day Assembly tomorrow. It is Veterans Day. That will be at 11:00 a.m. And it's an exciting day for us because not only do we get to honor our local veterans, we pay special, special attention to the veterans that work in the high school. We also recognize any veterans that might be present for the program. But I'm excited that we get to highlight our students. Our band will perform during that program. Our choir will perform. And our Air Force Junior ROTC will perform a flag folding ceremony. And so it's just a really neat thing to see our students be able to perform and to honor veterans as they do so. Would, want to make sure that you all know that you're invited to come to that at 11 o'clock tomorrow. Also, want to highlight fundraiser that we have going on at the high school. And that is a collection of hygiene items for the Public Defender's Office. And so what we are doing currently, our social studies department, along with Mr. Toby Alonso, who's one of our criminal justice teachers, they are working together and students and staff throughout the school are bringing hygiene items to them. And the idea is that once this fundraiser is over and this collection has concluded, we will give those items to the Public Defender's Office. And they have many clients that are in need of these hygiene items as they get back on their feet. And so it's just another way for our students to, really to serve the community, even if it might seem like it's in a small way. It matters. So that, that's really all I had to share. Any questions about those items? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good to see you, buddy. I wanted to share a couple of things with you. We had a career fair at Coffey County Middle School a few weeks ago. That's in conjunction with Westwood Middle School. Mr. Skipper at our high school puts this together, went very well, very well. And I will, I will say this because I had a city police officer tell me this, that our students were better behaved than Westwood Middle School. So, you know, any talent we can brag on our kids, I want to throw that out there. So, but they did an extremely good job.
It's a little video, you know.
You know. So, so very proud of our kids. They took that serious and, and did a great job of paying attention, asking questions, all those kinds of things. So proud of them for that. Wanted to let you all know that our Veterans Day program is tomorrow at 2 o'clock. You're welcome to attend. That is open to the public. So hope you can stop by for that. Again, our band, choir, all will be participating in that. We don't have a ROTC, but we have our cadets that work with our SRO. They'll also be presenting the flags and all that kind of good stuff for tomorrow. So 2 o'clock tomorrow. Tomorrow night, we have a basketball game, home basketball game against Stewart's Creek. So that's exciting. That'll start at 4 with our junior varsity. And varsity at 6. Wrestling will be later in the week this week. We'll be wrestling a couple of different teams. Avery Trace and Telahoma will be coming by for that. And then Friday will be our second round of intramural basketball. So this last Friday, they had the first round. So we play by our houses. And so I understand that it was mostly boys that were playing. So this week, we're going to try to make sure our girls have a chance to be on the court and be able to play this week. So that's, that's exciting. Last week, I attended a middle school conference in Indianapolis. And just to let you all know, it was amazing. A lot of great sessions. Ms. Cawthorn, our coach, and I went, we were there from like 8 to 4:30 each day in sessions all day long. Came back with tons of great ideas. So, so that was a good week. So I came home Saturday. So that was, that's about that. Any questions about those items? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Good evening. I'm a little bit shorter than them, so I'll adjust the microphone. We had a lot going on at Deerfield. We had our quarter one academic pep rally where we celebrated grades and hard work. We had our trunk or treat this month, or last month. We had lots of families come out for that. That's one of our most popular activities that we just have fun. And the teachers are allowed to, they bring their children. And so they just, they just get to spend time with the families. Our fourth grade went to the Hermitage for a field trip. Fifth grade went to Carter House. We had our Halloween parties. We also had our quarter one behavior celebration for students who score, have a 95 or above citizenship. And we had quite a few people attend that. So we're really excited about that. We got some well behaved students. Our first grade went to Discovery Center. Our third grade was due to go to Old Stone Fort, but they got rained out. So they are working on rescheduling something. We also had our Fall Festival last Friday night. Our Veterans Day program is tomorrow at 1:30. So if you guys would like to come, we're at 1:30. Our Thanksgiving dinner is Friday. So if you would like to come out and have Thanksgiving dinner with us, you're more than welcome. And our fifth grade will be visiting the high school this week to watch a play. So that's what we got going on at Deerfield. We had quite a bit. And looking forward for Thanksgiving break. That's it.
Okay.
Good evening. I just wanted to tell you a few things going on at New Union. Since our last board meeting, we recently had our first nine weeks awards day, which celebrates academics of all students. We had several, we invited our parents. We had a crowded gym that morning. And then that afternoon, we had a behavior celebration with snow cones and a dance party for those students that had great behavior. We're also, we've got two basketball games left in the regular season. And right now, I can say that the New Union Boys Rebels, they're undefeated. So let's keep that up. Also during the month of October, we had the volunteer fire department, New Union Volunteer Fire Department came out and talked to our students about fire safety. We also recently celebrated our Teachers of the Year and our Support Staff of the Year. Our pre-K through four, through four Teacher of the Year is Ms. Brooke McNeese. She teaches first grade at New Union. Our fifth, fifth grade through eighth grade Teacher of the Year was Ms. Liz Eaton. She teaches fifth grade ELA. And our Support Staff of the Year was Mr. Don Gleason. He is our custodian. We recently had our first annual literacy night in conjunction with our trunk retreat. We had over 200 families. It was very crowded, great night. First time for New Union to ever do anything like this. And it was a great success. On Halloween, during our staff development, we had a safety protocol review with Officer Daniel Ray. You know, in the unfortunate event that we ever have an active shooter, we discussed that in depth. And it was very good discussion to have, a lot of nos and dos that we went over with our staff as well as our faculty. Tomorrow, we will also be having our Veterans Day program. We'll have a breakfast in the morning at 8:00 a.m. And then at 8:45, we'll have a program in our gym that we've invited our parents and families and community to join us. And we will have a guest speaker, one of our own, Ms. Tonya Garner, that's a veteran of the Navy. She's going to come and be our guest speaker tomorrow. Also, I would like to celebrate some teachers that participated in the Sportsman's and Businessman's Grant Opportunity. We had three grants awarded, which was fantastic. Ms. Jennifer Hartley and Ms. Stephanie Hubbard, they did a grant for social emotional needs. Ms. Reynolds did a math night grant. And Ms. Bronkla, our music teacher, she did a grant for some chimes that she's going to order for our music program. Those checks will also be presented to us on Friday. So the Sportsman's and Business, Businessman's Club, they're going to come out and we're going to get a photo op. So if any of you would like to come join us, they're going to be coming out around 9 o'clock on Friday. We have also got a big day Friday. We've invited our Rebel family to come out and join us for our Fall Festival. It'll be beginning at 5:00 p.m. We will have games, food, a silent auction, and a live auction. And of course, pie in the face, I've been told. So, yeah.
I'm out. I'm sick that day.
But we're also collecting items this month for our Thanksgiving food, food, food drive that will end on November the 20th. And I just, all
All right. At Hickerson, we actually did our Veterans Day program last Friday and we had a great turnout, you could say, but because of our size, we can't invite parents any longer. We don't have enough space in our gym for that. So, but we did have several veterans and their families come out and then our kids all sang patriotic songs for them and, and we had a guest speaker. You may have, if you follow our Facebook page, you may have seen that our student ambassadors have been visiting different businesses throughout the community in support of the Manchester Chamber of Commerce's member November Drive. And so they visited, I think, three last week and they went to pick up more today from the chamber to see which businesses they'll go visit this week. Our boys and girls won their basketball games on Saturday, which was a big accomplishment for us. This Saturday, we play Hillsboro at 2:00 and 3:00 p.m. The 18th is our Thanksgiving meal. And tomorrow, Thunder Radio's coming out to interview our first graders on how to cook a turkey. So I look forward to hearing how they expect us to cook turkeys. That's, that's just a taste of what's been going on at Hickerson. We've had lots, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other ones? Is that everybody? All right. Now we can, I always enjoy hearing all the principal reports, whatever stuff is going on. Pretty amazing.
I would like to encourage you all to attend, if you can, tomorrow's Veterans Day programming throughout our, our district. I'll be attending New Union's breakfast and Deerfield's afternoon program, so, and the rest of our office is kinda split up between schools and they, they love seeing you guys in our schools. Thank you.
All right. So now we have our call for intent. We need to, this is to approve the minutes and the general consent items. We also have some modifications to the, more than usual, to the agenda. So we are going to, on the consent agenda items, we are going to pull 3.600 and add that as an agenda item. And we are going to, and that'll be agenda item 14. We're going to pull the paid parental leave and that'll be agenda item 15. And then agenda item 16 will be the TISA accountability report we'll need to approve. We also need to strike items three and four at the request of Ms. Gilli, I believe. So, so with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with all those changes.
I so move.
Mr. Coon.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cordell. Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Gilli?
Mr. Chair. Quick question for you. Was both of those items coming off or just?
Yes, sir.
The, I thought the, the logo. Policy says we're supposed to do, board is supposed to approve a logo change.
Which was just, I sent, I sent that to the board chair.
Am I correcting that? If so, then we'll have to amend this motion to put number?
Four back on. Yeah, that was my understanding discussing it before the meeting is that they were both gonna come off, so.
Well, the email that I had sent to you was just about the mascot.
Right.
Well, no.
All right. So we would need to amend the, to leave item four on there to discuss the logo. So strike number three and leave number four. So anybody want to amend?
I'll amend.
Okay, Mr. Gilli amends. And then, then we will have, do I need a, do we need a second on that? Amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Jones, seconds. All right. So on the?
Vote on the amendment and then vote on the amendment.
Yeah, we vote on the amendment, which would be to keep item number four, which is the, the logo. So, Mr. Gilli.
Hi.
Mr. Cordell.
Hi.
Ms. Inch.
Hi.
Mr. Hansert.
Hi.
Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Ms. Hodge.
Hi.
Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
I will vote aye, that is 9-2-0. And then on the main motion as amended, Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
Ms. Inch.
Hi.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
Ms. Jones.
Ah.
Ms. Hodge.
Ah.
Ms. Matthews.
Ah.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
I'll vote aye, that passes 9-2-0. Okay. So, sorry about the confusion on that. So our first agenda item then is the sign or the updated sign for the high school and, and Mr. Shores, Mr. Hargrove.
Mr. Parsley.
Oh, Mr. Parsley.
All right, it's me again.
Welcome back.
A couple of months ago, Mr. Jamie Harden with Harden Signs reached out to me and he's here this evening. And he had inquired about whether I might have interest at the high school in replacing the sign at the head of the front circle at the school. To understand exactly where I mean, the, the sign has two brick pillars, it's a white background, and I really don't know exactly how old the sign is. My best guess, 20, 30 years, I, I don't know. I, I know that it's been there for the entire time that I've worked at the high school. It is very, very dated, tarnished, you, you might say faded. And so Mr. Harden is a graduate of Coffee County Central High School. I believe he graduated in '90. He can correct me in a moment if I'm wrong. And he is interested in giving back to the school. And so he simply wants to donate a replacement sign. As I discussed that with him, we talked about two or three looks for the sign and he came back to me, I believe with about three initially. And the administrative team at the high school and I looked at those and narrowed it down to two. And then I went and talked with our student government, and three of them are here with us tonight. And really, I just said to the student government, which one of these do you like best? And they had a definite favorite. And that favorite just happened to be the, the favorite of the administrative team at the school. So really tonight, I, I'm coming to you and just asking for your blessing in replacing the, the sign at the head of the circle at the high school. And I have a composite of that sign here. And again, this would be at no cost to the high school, to the district. You might notice these lights here and I just asked Mr. Harden to, to add those lights to the picture. And my intention is to, with school money, purchase lights to place atop those pillars.
Those could be solar too, if you didn't?
Yeah, that's a great point and that is exactly what I intend to do. I'd talked with a couple of people in the district, one of those, Mr. Shores, and we had talked about how solar lights would not require for us to do any digging, you know, through the pavement and things like that. And so solar would very likely be the best route for us to go.
So this is the, not the sign that's got the information on it?
No, no ma'am. It's not.
That's nice.
It, it, yeah, this is, this is the one at the head of the circle. As you're pulling in, you know, you kind of wheel around to the right for the student drop off and it's, it's, it's right there as you circle around from the front. And these brick pillars, I, I believe Mr. Harden probably took a, a picture of the sign as it is now and, and I'm assuming just replaced the sign that's currently there with this new composite. So the, the pillar structure is, is what we have now.
Well, I have to say this, we're moving on up because since I was on the board, I remember the, I thought you were talking about the other sign in the beginning. We, I don't know if y'all knew or not, but we had one of these flashing signs that had the big arrow that would just flash and it was pointing to the school. And that bothered me, you know, we'd go by and it was, and I think they did away with them in the city, but we did away with ours, I believe, before the city did theirs. But that's how that other sign came into being.
Was it high school or 7-Eleven, right?
You made it work anyway.
All right, we, we need a motion on, on this one and then get into discussion. I so move.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
Mr. Parsley, I'm just curious.
Well.
I missed that.
Do we need a motion?
We need a motion.
Okay.
What's the motion?
To approve the sign.
Okay. Mr. uh, Mr. Cordell motions to approve the sign. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Hansert. Okay, discussion.
Okay. I was just gonna ask if, I was just curious what the value of that replacement is.
That's a great question and I should have mentioned that. I asked Mr. Harden that and he, he estimated, and he may have a precise figure, now I don't know, he said somewhere in the neighborhood of $4,000.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you.
Goodness, thank you so much. He's one of my favorites, all time people.
He's right back there. If you all have questions for him, I'm sure.
He has bailed me out of some situations. I think the world of Jamie. He's a good one.
Mr. Chair. He's building a lot of this out, so thank you, Jamie.
Yes. That's very, very generous.
So yeah, we can have questions for Mr. Parsley or for Mr. Harden.
Mr. Chair. Currently, is it just, it has the horse in the middle and Red Raiders on each side?
It does. It, it, my recollection is it said Red Raiders, I can't remember if it's on each side, but it currently has the horse in the middle. You're correct. It's a white background and it's just, as I said, you, you're welcome to drive by. If you come for the Veterans Day Assembly tomorrow, I'd encourage you to look. It, it's really faded. We have tried to, to wash, to clean it, and you can make it look a little better, but it just, it really is tarnished and needs to be replaced. This, this one looks awesome, in my opinion.
Very nice.
So he's got Harden Signs advertising on the side of it there, right?
Yes. What he placed on there, compliments of Harden Signs, you know, sponsored by Harden Signs, something like that, I imagine is what that will have there.
So in lieu of advertising, we're gonna let him use, do the sign, so we, we'll make sure that, that we're setting a precedence here for anybody that wants to donate.
Right.
Things that we let them use a sign in the future.
Right. We have several things around the school, around the front that have sponsorships like this. We did a sidewalk, I've lost track, three, four, or five years ago, sponsored by three or four local businesses, and we have a sign sponsorship there where they purchased that.
Yeah, the, the old sign at New Union has donated, has donated or sponsored by C&amp;G Sheik Metal, and the old one. The new one hopefully we'll get it. Hey, you need to call them. But C&amp;G donated that sign and I know that they did have the, the logo on there that was donated by them.
Other questions?
It looks really good. I like how it's black instead of white.
I do too. I like the black background.
I really like the lines.
It stands out.
It is amazing. Thank you very much.
So if you all have approval, I'm sure he'll get started on the sign and I'll start looking into ordering some lights for the top, so.
Going shopping. All right.
All right.
Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Inch.
Hi.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Ms. Hodge.
Hi.
Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
I will vote aye, that passes 9-2-0. Okay. Next up is the maintenance shed and fence. Is that you, Mr. Shores, or?
Mr. Shores will be doing a bit.
Okay, this was brought up at the Capital Projects Committee a week or two ago and it's the maintenance department, we, we have several items and the, the department that we have, the sunroof, it's a struggle to get everything in the dry during the wintertime and it's basically, we're, we're asking permission to add a 40 by 60 building to the campus at Cos. This is not something that is needing approval as far as purchasing the building, but anytime we're putting a permanent structure on the campus, by policy, the board's supposed to approve it. And if, get approval here, I do need to go down also to the mayor's office to get approval as well because they actually own the campus. But, so, just asking for approval for putting the maintenance shed on the campus of Cos, which is right next to where the maintenance department is, so that we can put our assets in during the wintertime.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gilli motions to approve.
I'll second.
And Mr. Coon? Okay. Any discussion? Questions for Mr. Shores?
Mr. Shores, what was the, the cost on that building, you remember? Are people in home, know what this thing cost?
Uh, which we're not, I mean, that's not what we're actually discussing, but that's no problem. We'd still go over it. We're looking at approximately $18,000. We, which our maintenance department would be the, the one doing the actual installs. There might be some fees as far as permits and so forth that we have to do with the city, but we're looking under $20,000 is what we're looking at. And it would also include a fence, because we have to put a fence around it to, to keep people out as well.
That's a 40 by 60, correct?
That's correct.
What we talked about the other day?
Yes.
And it will not have a concrete floor in it.
At this time, no. Or the plans as, as of right now, no.
Further discussion?
How, it's not necessarily pertaining to that, but you, you made a comment about that the main county actually owns that land.
Yes. They, they actually own the building.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit? Because it's got the question of the old Riverview as well in my head.
Okay, the, the county, whenever that was acquired, I'm not sure how they did it, but dealing with some other things that, that I was going through a few years back, I found out that the, the actual property at Cos, that includes the bus garage, Cos, and the maintenance department, every bit of that is still owned by the county. So it, it, we do not have the title of it. The title is actually in the county. And I'm assuming, this is just assumptions, and I hate to do that because it could be completely wrong, is it would be dealing with ADA with it at that time. I'm not sure. I, I would have, actually have to find out from somebody else that was during that time here. But they, they actually still have the title and we are, they're, they've given us the right to use the, the building, which they would have been back during the time they moved from behind where the courthouse is and the office buildings there. The bus garage and maintenance was in that part. They wanted that property as way, I'm understanding. And part of that dealing was getting the Cos or the old Stanley Nab dealership and purchasing it. And then we also had to move out of Riverview at the same time, so.
That was part of, because the, the deeds on those, and this will get into something else later.
Right.
The deeds of those say, Board of Education.
Big deeds of which ones?
The actual deeds. Riverview, I know for a fact, and.
Well, Riverview is actually, as you know, three fifths hours deed and two fifths Manchester City.
It's not referencing any of the deeds, but anyways.
Okay.
Yeah. Carry on.
I know when Cos Center was purchased, that it was kind of a swap because. I know when Cost Center was purchased, that it was kind of a swap because that, that land behind the old high school was part of the Coffee County school system.
That's the way I understand.
So I don't know how it played out, but evidently we must've given it and gave it And, and then for use of the, use of that facility now that we have.
I'm assuming.
I didn't realize we didn't own that.
The motion is to, uh, place the, uh, equipment shed on the, uh, Cost property?
Campus, yes.
Yeah, and maintenance, yeah. All right, any further discussion? Mr. Hensher.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Aye, that passes nine two zero. Next up is the New Union logo, and I guess that would be Ms. Gillie.
That would be Ms. Gillie. You're very welcome.
Okay, um, when I became principal at New Union, we kind of went, I talked to my leadership team and we kind of went through this idea of kind of rebranding New Union and bringing some new exciting things, uh, to New Union, so we looked at the logo and along with Ms. Hamms and Mr. Harden that just left, they helped us design a new logo, and let me see if I've got a picture of it, this is it. Um, and after talking to Mr. Hargrove, I found that there's a board policy that we have to have a new logo or a new mascot, it has to be approved by the board. We discussed a new mascot, but the leadership team, we've decided to go back and look at that again, but we do need approval for this logo to continue to be used, so...
All right, any questions? Do we have a, a motion?
So move.
Mr. Hensher?
I'll second that.
Move to approve? You're, um, okay. And Mr. Cordell, okay. Any discussion or questions for Ms. Gillie? All right, that should be pretty easy. All right, Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillie.
Passed.
Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensher.
Aye.
And, uh, that passes nine two zero. Congratulations on your new logo.
Thank you.
What's that?
Ms. Gillie did not vote, he passed.
He passed.
Oh, he passed, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
For obvious reasons.
I, I guess my ears are plugged up with that snow, so eight two zero with one abstention.
Abstention.
An abstention in Tennessee is a no vote, by the way, but, so, it would technically be eight to one.
Maybe you can convince Mr. Harden to do, to do the sign like that.
There you go. All right, so, uh, special committees, Mr. Hargrove, you wanna introduce that?
Well, we, um, we, our innovation team committee met, um, as well as our after-school committee, they share a lot of characteristics, uh, a lot of the same needs, and my recommendation is that we combine the after-school committee with our innovation committee. It's the same language, the same talk, about the same thing, so...
We have, oh, not much overlap between the two.
Yes, sir.
So, there would have to be some people who would come off.
Well, we're, we're still in the process of adding the faculty members on to the...
Right, okay.
Innovative, innovation committee.
All right, so...
I can come off if you need me to.
Okay, we can take Frida off.
I'll come off.
What's that?
I said I'll come off of the...
Mr. Coon would come off, that would put...
Won't you need to get a motion on the floor?
Yeah, all right, so, well, we got, we got a couple other, we got one other thing too, is on the ethics committee is Mr. Castillo.
Mr. Castillo, what, just figuring out his status, is he still serving on our ethics committee?
Yes, as far as I'm, I'm aware.
Okay.
Well, that, that, that helps me.
So we would not change his status?
Yes, sir, so, that would not change the status of that committee.
All right, so, we would have, so, we still have one, two, we have on the innovation committee, Ms. Inch, myself, Mr. Cordell, and on the after-school program, we have Ms. Inch, so that, Ms. Matthews and, and Ms. Peacock Hodge, so, um, so we have like one too many at this point, so... So, we can have a maximum of four.
I can step off on that, on if you need somebody to step on.
Okay, so Mr. Cordell would come off, so the innovation committee then would be Ms. Inch, myself, Ms. Matthews, and Ms. Peacock Hodge, does that work?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
You okay with that?
One other person's got to come off.
What's that?
One more. There's five.
What?
No, Ms. Inch is on both of them.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Cordell and Mr., uh, Ms. Jones came off the, so, Ms. Matthews and Mr., Ms. Peacock Hodge, so that should be four, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be the, the revised innovation committee, um, I think there was one other thing, Ms. Inch, did you want to bring that in?
Um, I want to, just, I want to know that someone on the school board has at least reviewed the textbooks that are approved by our committee before we vote on them, and so I was volunteering to do that, to look over the textbooks and just, just to review them, because we have to vote those in, and wouldn't be a member of that board, I would simply be looking over the material before we vote.
Uh, uh, that's fine. As far as the textbook, uh, committee goes, and, and I think it's in stature, and I think, I understand, o- our intent is nothing but good and supportive and, um, the things that we want, the relationship that we want to have with our school board and our teacher and our, um, textbook choices, we pick those off a state recommended list.
Right.
And I think the law's in there, and please hear me say, you are a saint, I'm not pointing that, I think the law's in play so that a school board member couldn't influence a textbook choice.
Right, and I don't expect to be a part of that board.
Yes, ma'am.
But before we vote, that is our influence on the textbooks, is we have to make the vote to accept those textbooks, and how can you vote for something you've never even looked at?
I would think that you're able to look, I would say everybody on the board would be able to ask and look at them if you request before you vote, I would think.
And in fact, when they show those textbooks, um, a lot of times, it's, it's almost like a display or a expo where all their materials are laid out and, and all the, the software that you can use with them, all the things like that, so, and visit those, that we don't, that's not a...
Right. Yeah, I'm not trying to influence the committee in any way.
Yes, ma'am.
Other than that we have to vote on it, so...
Does that answer your question? I don't know if I did or not.
I understand that there is a time when the, the, uh, community can look at those textbooks.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it might be that I could just go in with the community at that time, because we'll actually have something in our hands, right, that we can flip through and, or is there a different way that the community actually looks at those textbooks?
I know Steve, when, uh, we've looked at textbooks before Stephen has links, and we go, we'd look at the textbooks via links.
Okay.
And so I would think that would be available.
Okay. Yeah, that would be all I needed, is a link.
Yes, ma'am.
So, somebody on the school board has put an eye on before we tell our community we've approved of these books and voted on them.
I understand. And I, and I just think the intent of the law was, and, and, and that's not our situation at all, not even remotely close, I mean, your heart's in the right place, the servant's heart, and I guess that's it. Well enough.
All right, so I would need a motion, I, I guess the only change on here is we're gonna merge the after-school excellence with the innovation committee, and the new innovation committee is gonna consist of Beth Inch, Thomas Ballard, Holly Matthews, and Jennifer Peacock Hodge, so I would need a motion to approve that.
So move, I second.
Mr. Hensher and Mr. Cordell. Okay, any discussion? We kind of did discussion ahead of time, but I guess there was no way around that, so, all right.
Mr. Ballard, I...
Yes, sir.
Can you say the motion in the second, I, I missed it.
Oh, uh, Mr. Hensher made the motion, Mr. Cordell made the second, so...
Thank you.
What is the motion again? I'm sorry to have you repeating.
The motion is to merge the, the after-school excellence program with the innovation committee, so you just have the innovation committee, which would consist of Beth Inch, Thomas Ballard, Holly Matthews, and Jennifer Peacock Hodge.
Okay, so there's no after-school committee anymore?
There would be no after-school committee, and that was...
So the ones on the after-school committee are now on the innovation committee?
Right.
Okay.
It would cover that, yeah.
The after-school portion would be part of that committee meeting as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so, further questions on that?
I just wanted to play...
That was actually proposed by Mr. Hargrove that said there's an overlap.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
All right, any, any discussion? Okay, uh, Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Gillie is absent, uh, Mr. Cordell.
Aye.
Ms. Inch.
Aye.
Mr. Hensher.
Aye.
And Ms. Jones.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes eight two zero. All right, next up, you stepped back in just, just to miss the vote. All right, next up is the innovation grants.
Speaking of the innovation committee, very timely, um, we have been, we had a great first committee, that was the first time that committee met, and there were a lot of great ideas traded and exchanged that day, um, I'm gonna let Ms. Garner speak to some of the process, but lo and behold, I think it was two days later, our friends at the Sportsman and Businessmen's charitable organization awarded our teachers who applied for grants in innovation, innovative grants in schools, were awarded somewhere less than, just a little bit less than twenty-five thousand dollars, and, uh, that's right in that committee's wheelhouse in continuing to, to grow our students and stretch our students in different ways. Moving forward, we continue, and teachers that, uh, potentially did not get that grant, hopefully they'll apply for our grant and make it through our process. Speaking of our process, some of the paperwork and the vetting, you know, application process was some of the things we talked about in our committee, enter Ms. Tonia.
So Jonah and I and, um, Mr. Hargrove, I even shared it with Crystal, we've all kind of looked at, um, we are going to send out an innovation grant application, um, some of the, you know, stipulations to be eligible is you have to be, you have to work for Coffee County schools, um, we have on here like when the application will open, when the applications are due, um, and when we plan on announcing the awards, um, we put that, uh, for grant amounts, you could ask up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and the applications will be in a form, um, a Google form, so we'll send that out to all staff, um, and then once the grant applications come in, it will be you all's decision whether it's going to be the committee that, um, chooses which ones to fund, or if it's gonna be the whole board, um, I don't have any of that figured out, that's, um, what you all will decide. Once the applications come in, whoever will be making the, um, deciding who's gonna get them, um, funded, I've, we have created a rubric to kind of streamline it, to make sure everybody's kind of looking at the same things, um, and then go from there. It would be nice if we could award them in January and give them that, um, semester to do their project, but that's what we have so far.
Thank you, Ms. Tonia. I would love for our committee to meet again in December since we've only met one time and sort through and come up with more of a concrete schedule for when grants go out. Um, my recommendation is that we alter our budget and I'm asking for fifty thousand dollars to support, um, the awarded grant. Uh, I believe Ms. Melson will speak a little bit more about that later if you so decide to, to award that.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to approve the innovation grants?
I so move.
Ms. Inch, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell, okay, any discussion? Questions for Mr. Hargrove, uh, Ms. Garner?
How many grants are you planning on giving out each year?
Well, uh, we had several that were already awarded through the SBCO, so I'm anxious to see how many more grants we get that are involved in that, um, part of that grant money will also help support our after-school tutoring program that we started after Labor Day. We also have our littles, which are our K-one and two second grade students that will start after January, so we'll see how many groups, um, we have, or how many children and teachers we have to serve them following Christmas break.
Explain a little bit more about the, you know, the twenty-five hundred dollars that, that, uh, we anticipate being the grants that, uh, Ms. Garner is, um, putting together the applications for.
Say that again, sir?
They, explain a little bit more about the twenty-five hundred dollar innovation grant that Ms. Garner's, or maybe she's the best one to talk about it on how that's...
Those are things just outside of the school day that grow our children. It may be in fine arts, may have music or art, it may be in agriculture, uh, providing our children learning activities that occur outside the classroom that help them in their life. Um, Ms. Inch, you're able to jump in at any time, what were some of the others? We spoke about STEM.
Well, and I'll just add, so the whole, uh, point of the innovation grants is to support creative ideas that improve educational outcomes from students. Proposals may focus on academics, mentoring, mental health, behavior improvement, extracurricular activities, or the arts, so we're just looking for innovative, you know, out of the box things. And we had just said like a max of twenty-five hundred, um, so they don't have to ask for twenty-five hundred and a half?
No, they don't, that's just the top end.
Right, so that's just the top, like, for one proposal.
And that would come from that initial pool of fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna fund, okay?
Yes, sir.
What is Ms. Sazmore's role in this, since she is actually, you know, the supervisor of the elementary program?
She's on the committee as well.
She's just on the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what we're all, I mean, this was a, this was a committee thing, I, I didn't just do this.
Okay, I thought since she wasn't here, maybe you were doing it.
Well...
Well, we flipped a coin and I lost.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Jonah, uh, does a lot with our tutoring.
I know, and we, you know, she does so much in the background that I just wanted to make sure that we understand that that's, she's the one that's over the academic program and, and Ms. Cole over the secondary, um, and I'm sure Ms. Cole probably has input, would have input into this too if it was secondary.
Yes, and actually the, the, uh, application, Ms. Garner shared with me, I had a root canal and was unable to attend the first meeting.
Oh, that's terrible.
But, um, we actually beat up the budget part of this to make sure we're completely clear on what teachers are asking for, and so if they ask for twenty-five hundred dollars, there's an anonymized budget that needs to be completed just so the committee members, the board, really knows and has a clear vision of, of what the teachers are asking for.
Well, one of the things that I remember from the committee meeting is we're hoping to come out of this that if it works... that if it works in one school, if it works in one classroom, that we can take it and multiply it in other classrooms as well. So we're looking for those ideas that will work in multiple places, also.
Serve all our kids.
And I guess the main thing is where the money is coming from, I mean, fifty thousand dollars, is that per year?
We're gonna start and see where our program grows. Um, a shout-out to Mr. Carter Seame and Taylor Rayfield from another organization.
So, it won't just be coming from our budget? You're thinking fifty thousand overall, that's coming from different places?
From our, from Coffee County Schools.
For, for our schools, but it could be coming from other sources besides our general budget?
Eventually, we want to find other grants to fund this. So it doesn't come out of our budget at all.
I'm sorry, is this funded by what the Sportsman and Businessmen gave us, or is this totally separate?
It, um, we were gonna fund it by school dollars and eventually grow this into where we're writing grants to cover the funds for it. But we had several teachers that applied for grants through the SBCO.
Yeah, right.
And lo and behold, he's good always, we're a little bit short of twenty-five thousand dollars from those grants. So that really helped us, you know, our spending, I'm not sure where we'll be at on the fifty thousand, but originally that was the number we came up with.
The fifty thousand, but now that they've.
That was prior to the, to our friends over there, our partners over there.
So now that they've donated twenty-five-ish?
Yes, ma'am.
It maybe wouldn't take the fifty, right?
Might not, but I hope it does. That means we're serving kids.
Other questions?
I guess one of the things that, that I, since I'm not on committee here, I am talking so much, but uh, like those goals that, that Dr. Cronatus shared with us earlier about the 8th grade ELA and 8th grade math, you know, they did not, uh, change, you know, they stayed stable from one year to the next. And we've got that state goal that they have to be to a certain point. I'm hoping that with this innovation committee, that some of, somebody will address that, you know, that that money goes toward, toward that, if possible.
And we started out, uh, Ms. Frida, with two pilot schools, uh, New Union and North Coffee doing the tutoring. That's grown to, uh, to three and four, I mean, we're, we're hoping to grow this from our elementary to our, um, middle school. And we already have several tutoring opportunities that I shared with you all previously, and our, and our high school as well, so, yes, ma'am. We wanna start.
Be a good opportunity to use our funds toward something like that.
Pushing, improving student outcomes.
And it's so good that Mr. Anderson got to attend that conference in Indianapolis, I know that was very enlightening.
One of my concerns is if we, and I know these marks need to be reached, but one of my concerns in the meeting was if we make it so tied to, um, all these different things that they have to meet, that's gonna kill some of the innovation, I feel like. And, and the purpose of this is to allow teachers to think outside the box and not always have to stay in the box with their, with what they do with their lesson plans with. Because everything can't be measured that keep kids learn inside a box. I mean, there, we wouldn't have brought art into the schools if that was the case. Um, there are things that kids need to learn that the teachers need a chance to say, I've got this fabulous idea, I think it'll add to this particular goal, but I think it's a fabulous idea and I want a chance to try it. So, I don't wanna see it so rigid that we leave out a lot of creative ideas.
And.
My point is not for it to be rigid, my point would be to come up with innovative ways of changing the, 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 the future of, of those, uh, 8th grade math students and 8th grade ELA. You can come up with innovative things, and that's what we need to do, instead of just the same old drill and.
Well, sometimes it's about learning about things that you're not accustomed to learning about that gets you excited about learning about the things that aren't so bells and whistles and exciting that we are measured on. It's just about the hook, the hook and the love of learning. And those are great thing, um, our next committee meeting, maybe we can look through the rubric, all that information will be shared, and we'll have all that ironed out, so we know that things aren't too rigid, that things aren't. But, you know, on the schoolteacher's side of it, you know, we're used to rubrics and, and the process a little bit. But I appreciate the hard work that Ms. Tonia and Ms. Sizmore have put into the.
I do too.
Yes, ma'am.
They've already got it, um, so we just haven't.
They just had that meeting, it's really exciting. I, I, I got home and I was very excited about the outcomes from that, that meeting.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the innovation grants with an initial fifty thousand dollar fund. And, uh, that's basically what we're voting on tonight, so that is the motion. Um, any further discussion? Not, then, uh, you wanna say something?
No, I thought you was wanting to vote.
You look like you wanted to say something. Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Uh.
Mr. Gillie.
Uh.
Mr. Cordell.
Uh.
Ms. Yench.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Uh.
Ms. Jones.
Uh.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine to zero. Okay, next up is compliance report.
Okay, with the compliance report, this is a yearly, uh, report that I have to, we have to turn in through the school district. Uh, each year there's, uh, legislation that is changed and laws changed. And this is basically saying that we are following those laws. If we are not following those laws, then we need to come up with a, uh, plan of action to, to start following those laws. Um, we have met, uh, Mr. Hargrove and, uh, myself, as well as all the supervisors have met, gone through all the laws, and, uh, everybody agrees that we have, we are meeting those laws. And, uh, so, we just need the board's approval, so that we can then update, upload this into e-plan and move on.
We, I don't think we got a copy of that, you know, so there's no.
The only thing you have, all this is, is a, a sheet that just says, you met, and I just need a signature from, uh, the board chairman, as well as the director of schools, and that, that's all it is. We're, as soon as we get it signed, if everybody approves, then we will, if you want to, we'll put it on the board stuff. But it's, it's just a form saying that we are meeting them.
Is everybody okay with approving it?
We, we don't even know what law you're talking about.
All laws of education.
Yeah, and there's.
Of Tennessee.
Probably about eight pages of them. Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve this.
Okay, Mr. Gillie, motions to approve.
And I'll second it.
And Ms. Yench, okay, any, uh, discussion?
This is my fifth year of doing this compliance report.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Coon.
Uh.
Mr. Gillie.
Uh.
Mr. Cordell.
Uh.
Ms. Yench.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Uh.
Ms. Jones.
Uh.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Uh.
I will vote aye, that passes nine to zero, okay. And next up is also Mr. Shores, the furniture bid.
Okay, as I spoke last year, each year we go through and, and, uh, assess the furniture that we have in our buildings to decide what are we needing. Uh, we will get to the point that we are finished with all this, but, uh, we are still a long ways from it, and we're still working through the high school. Same thing as I told you last year, the high school is a large school, a lot of classrooms, a lot of furniture, and we're working our way through it, and right this year, the, the focus is on more of the band area. Uh, the band, um, the, the instrument storage, uh, mainly it's the instrument storage and the music storage, as well as in the choir, it's gonna, they're needing risers. They had some homemade risers, and those have been, uh, they, they were so bad, they didn't wait to, to see if we were getting new ones. They got them out first of last year, I'm assuming, I, I think that's what it was, wasn't it, Gavin?
It was the end of the year.
End of the year. And, so, most of it's that area, there are a few office furnitures, uh, CTE, special ed, uh, some places throughout. And as you can tell on here, there's a, also a classroom or two that needs some furniture changed out. Also at Raider Academy, uh, the science rooms, when they receive new furniture, probably, I'm gonna say eight years ago, might've been nine years ago, they did not get, uh, new seating in those rooms, they still have the stools. Uh, the, the students complained regularly, is the way I'm understanding, uh, for Ms. Klaus and the, the other science teachers there. And so this is actually updating those to chairs in the science room. And, uh, I think that's about everything I've got. I, I did a, a quick, uh, list, so that you can kinda see, uh, what we would be getting. Uh, understand that such as office desk, it takes several pieces put together to make, uh, one office desk. So you're, it's, it could get confusing if you're looking at the papers behind it, which is the actual quote from Ernie Morris. Uh, this would be purchased through a, uh, cooperative purchasing. Uh, once again, we do that with the furniture, so that the furniture matches throughout the school. Um, trying to think of anything else with that. Uh, we do have the, the funding in the furniture line to, to cut, to take care of this. And the goal would be to get it all lined up, so that we would be able to get it during the summer and do the change out during the summertime on this furniture. Uh, that's about all I could think of with it, if there's any questions.
A motion on the furniture?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Cordell, Mr. Gillie. Any discussion, questions for Mr. Shores?
So I'm understanding that all the, all the, this furniture comes to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen, is that correct?
That is correct, and that includes the freight and surcharges that are included.
And it is all budgeted for already, so.
Yes, yes, sir.
And they can't get it to us before summer, so that the teachers could already have use of it?
We could probably get it before summer, we, we, I have found that it's better for our system to do it during the summer, because we're taking the old furniture out, uh, it gives the custodians time to go in, do the wax and full wax jobs, uh, come in with brand-new furniture, start the next school year off with brand-new furniture. It's just a smoother trans, transition, 'cause we're having to, to take the old furniture out, and we have to get it out in time for new furniture to come in, and it's just, works a lot smoother during the summer.
Yeah, this is, this is every year, every year, that's why there's a budget line item for that. Last year, I think it was two-hundred and forty-something, I think last year was the biggest year, and it's, so it's under our belt, I believe. 'Cause I think they held it up, the board held it up on you for a little while.
I, I don't remember exactly, I, I don't, I think this one's actually a little bit more than last year's, but I, I'd have to look to make sure.
It was over.
I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna disagree with you.
It was in the two hundreds last year.
Okay.
And, and, uh, Gavin's here, Frank of Phil, he's, uh, the band instructor, and, and if you have any questions, 'cause a lot of this is dealing with band, uh, it's just, the, the band room needs some, some major overhaul, and it's their time.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the, uh, the furniture bid, um, any further discussion? Not, uh, Mr. Gillie.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Uh.
Ms. Yench.
Aye.
Mr. Hansert.
Uh.
Ms. Jones.
Uh.
Ms. Hodge.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Uh.
Aye, that passes nine to zero. Next up is the wool proposal for Carden Gerald Stadium, and I think that's back to you, Mr. Shores.
Well, Mr. Ballard, we're gonna do this in two parts.
Okay.
And I wanna get, let Mr. Shores get an opportunity to, to get set up.
Transition.
Yes, sir. A recommendation.
This includes Jennifer's bathrooms, right?
No.
I am so excited about the bathrooms not being disgusting, you have no idea. So excited.
Okay, what we have, I, I went ahead and just went ahead and, and brought this up for reference. It's not that, I don't wanna go through the entire presentation, but it kinda gives you an idea of where we're looking at on the, uh, the campus and at the football stadium. The buildings we're gonna be looking at is this building here, which is, uh, the visitors' locker room. That has not been used for a visitors' locker room for several years, just because it's small, the, the locker room itself is small. And I took the board into it, I guess, two years during the fall retreat to look at it, and if you were here during that time, you saw it's, it's, it's pretty rough, as far as, it's just, it's not a nice, clean look to it. The other place we're looking at is in this area here, this is the, the concessions, if you know anything about the current concessions, as well as the visitors' locker room that we're using now is actually the soccer locker room from previous. And then we're looking in this area here with the possibility of adding a new facility. All I'm asking for, or needing tonight, is to, to get a vote to allow wool to move forward with the design, the, the layout, doing all that part. And if the board wants to, to vote, just go through that part of it, then we could do that, and then bring it back up if we're ready to go before bid, uh, if we wanna go ahead and take it to the bid. Uh, that's completely up to the board on how you wanna handle it. We could look at three or four different sections with this, and I'm gonna move down, because there's other pictures. They did a preliminary look at the whole, whole, all this, but there's not detailed drawings. So what we're looking at is the detailed drawings. This is the old locker room for the visitor's side, they would be looking at the possibility of gutting the whole thing out. Mr. Gillie actually brought that up a few years back, uh, but, but looking at gutting it, putting in some still, some restrooms there that could be used, uh, and then making basically the whole locker room for the visitors' locker room. And if you think about it, we don't wanna build, this is kinda my thought, we don't wanna build a nice new locker room for our visitors, so that they would have a nicer locker room than our own home team. It just doesn't make sense, but we can make this into a nice situation, a nice setup for them. Okay, moving on down, this is our current setup, uh, with concessions, men and women's restroom, and you brought that up. We are working on that currently with the restrooms, going through, uh, remodeling them, they're turning out really good, gonna look really nice when we get done with it. Uh, the visitors, this is where they're using, was the locker room for soccer, and.
Still is.
It still is, but it's, it's being used also as a vis, visitors' locker room, uh, for football games as well. And then, of course, here's concessions. One of the things that they're looking at is changing, taking the concessions, doing away with concessions in this part and turn it into locker rooms for our track and our cross-country. Bathrooms would still be here, home locker room's still here, this would be the, the, uh, soccer, girls and boys, because one's in the fall, one's in the spring, so it works out pretty good. Moving on, um, one of the things that's being used in the locker room over at the, uh, the visitor's side, the, the old red building, is they're using it for storage for track, uh, so this includes putting some, uh, covered spaces underneath the home side bleachers for storage for track, and give them as much as they already have, uh, storage underneath that area. And as you can tell, they would be turning the, the concessions into two track locker rooms. Once again, men's and women's still here, soccer being left where it's at. Moving on, this is the, if, looking at the new building, uh, the things that would be in the new building would be a room for the referees and officials to have as a locker room for them, you, you have to provide that, uh, well, for them to change and you go to during halftime and so forth. Building a new concessions, so you would have a new concessions in this building, and also tickets. Uh, one of the main things I was looking at, and saw, like I said, we went to it back two years ago during fall. Uh, one of the main things I was looking at and saw, like I said, we went to it back two years ago during fall retreat, but we didn't do it because I, I felt like we had other pressing needs in our system. And I, I brought it up at, at that time. This is something we were gonna look at. We're at that point. We're able to look at it. Mr. Harrow came in and he noticed that our first football game, the, the coffee pot, we had lines going all the way to the school, basically. So he started noticing, hey, we might need to look at putting in a ticket booth that could handle more people. So that's what the ticket booth whiz is with a opening to, to walk through going into the football stadium. Can I give you an idea on the, where it would look like on the campus? This would stay here, just gutted, redone, new bathrooms, so forth. But the new building here, it would put a new, fresh look to the interests of our building, or into our stadium. Uh, and so everybody would be coming in here, which is the home side. Uh, at one time, we talked about doing it over here, but it didn't make sense. We want people coming in on our home side, over here concessions. Once again, this would turn into just locker rooms, so it, it would just be there. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be actually accessing it except for the bathrooms. And, go ahead.
The center, the old ticket booth right in the center. That was a little bit of a...
There was a little bit of a discussion. This is also talking about changing this fence out, pulling the fence out, put a wrought iron top fence, uh, concrete or brick columns to make it look nice as you come up to it. If you did that, you're able to move this, uh, fence back some. It gives a little bit more space to do the walking through. Really hasn't decided on the, the building, but it is moving it so that you are all the way up to that building.
Because you'd still, you got so much parking that way, it would still be a...
Well, there, there's actually space here that it could be moved and actually open it up quite a bit, probably four or five feet. So it, it, it was better than what we thought. Okay? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I thought, I thought some of the lookings and talkings we'd done was the center one would also stay available because if your visiting, visiting teams and opposing people would have a closer way from the main parking area.
There's a possibility.
Some people's gonna do that because the only time I ever seen them down here was if you were, uh, already had season tickets or the go fan.
Right. And that could be definitely used. This is just something that they have designed before. Same type of process with a walk-through, uh, tickets, concessions, they'd be all, all together. Uh, they kinda gives you an ideal, just a, a visual, uh, that they could come up with.
Ards won't have a barber shop, though. Says it right there.
Saber.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. And I'm gonna stop with that. I'll see you after you get your motion and so forth. But right now, it's how far you want to go with it. It's broken down if you put into the motion. Just go to getting the bids. Or if you want to just focus on this building, we could just focus on that building. If we want to just focus on the new building, we could just focus on it. The entire project is part of that proposal. So it can be broken out. It's just however the board wants to go and, and you let me know what direction you want to take, or if you don't want to take the direction at all, we'll close her up and move on.
So what's in our packet and what we're gonna be voting on is the fee for Wool to do the design?
For them to go ahead and start the design, and it would be all the way to the point of, the next step is, take it to bid. And if they take it to bid, of course, then that turns into another fee. And then if it, we actually go to the building of it, then that, that turns into that next step of the fee. Everything, and they haven't changed, same as with our schools. If it's a new building, it's six percent of the total cost. If it's a remodel, it's seven point five percent of the, the total cost of the remodel. Um, but to get to that point, it's a percentage of each part, if that makes...
Right. But the hundred and thirty thousand we're looking at tonight is their design.
That would be the...
Take it to the next.
No, the hundred and thirty thousand is taking it to the full end of the, the whole project.
Okay.
So you're not, unless you vote to, to move all the way through, no, it, it wouldn't be a hundred and thirty thousand that you're voting on. It would be a percentage, so...
Well, that's what's in our packet, so I'm just trying to be clear what we're voting on here, so we can get a motion for...
And let me, let me sit back down and I could go through a couple more things with you, such as if they just do the schematic and design, that's fifteen percent of that, say, a hundred and thirty thousand. If they do the schematic design, which the next step is design and development, that'd be another twenty percent of it. Contracting and development is another forty percent. So that would be the part that we would be really voting on today is the forty, the sixty, seventy-five percent of that hundred and thirty thousand. Then if we decide to go ahead and take it to the bidding, that's another five percent. The actual construction admin, which is the overseeing of it, is twenty percent of that. If you add all that together, it's a hundred, the hundred percent, which is the hundred and thirty thousand.
So, so the motion would be to approve up to, possibility of up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with Wool?
More than anything, really, it's the motion is to move forward with, you know, do you want to do this up to the bidding process or all the way through to the end? And either way, you're gonna have to bid it out. I'm gonna have to bring it back to the board if that's the direction you want to go. And then the board would have to vote, do we accept these bids or not?
Yeah. We don't, we don't have anything in front of us that says the forty, the seventy-five, the seventy...
I'm gonna lie to you, I called them today. I was like, I need a little more information.
So if we're actually gonna start this process, then we're looking at the designing and the architectural and engineering.
And if you want to say basically seventy-five percent of the hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm just trying to get clear what, what we're making a motion and voting on here because it's not well-defined right now.
Is, is Wool the only, is this the only architectural, architectural firm that we get to give us a bid on this?
This, uh, Wool is the group that this board chose a year and a half, two years ago, to move forward with. We, before that, we were using O L G as our architects and engineer. So that's the reason why I continue to use them is because the board voted, this is our group for architect and design.
Can we not get another bid on this? I mean, I think we're doing a, a whole lot with this company and we're not getting any bids at all.
We, we can, we can actually put another, uh, bid out for services and go through that whole process. The last time we did it, uh, we had three different groups to turn in, and the board decided to go with Wool. But we can actually go out and do another bid process for services if this group would like for me to do that.
Yeah, that's all, that's all we got was three. We got three. O L G, Wool, and, and we chose to go with Wool because the third one was a small guy.
Three-four, three-four-two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who designed Deerfield?
Uh, Hastings.
Would they not be interested in this? That's a beautiful school, and...
They didn't submit.
Okay. They, once again, I put it, put out a, uh, gosh, it's...
R F P.
R F P? Is it, is it a R F P? Basically for professional services, we had three to put in their, their, their proposals. They presented to this board during a work session. The board then voted at a board meeting to go with Wool, so that's the reason why I'm using Wool. If you want me to go, it's, no matter what, we are with Wool on, um, Hickerson and East Coffee, but that's the group, this group decided to go with for Coffee County Schools, so I'm staying with them. But if you want me to move to somebody else, I can, I can put another R F P out and...
Well, I think Fredo, Fredo will remember and some of the, the newer board members that we have a project going on with them right now. It's a lot of times easier and cheaper. It's probably gonna be cheaper even if you put it out to anyone else to use them while they're here on our site. Now, if we were done with all these projects, that'd be different, and we were asking for a new project, you'd probably put it out and see if you could get different architects and engineers, but since they're actually working here and they're here in the...
So we're locked in with Wool, with all the, anything that we're building.
No, you're not locked in.
No, I mean, anything we're building. Now?
As of right now, I'm, I'm using the company that this, the board voted for me to use and it chose as our architectural and design. No, we're not locked in. We are locked in with them some things. But if this board chooses for me to put out another R F P for them to, for us to try to get another architect, then that's another process, and we need to get that ball rolling. But we're still gonna be working with Wool on these certain ones. And it's almost like if we're working with a group and they are the ones we chose, why would we not work with them on the others that we're doing?
I, I just don't want us to get into a situation like the last, our renovation projects at North Coffee and New Union. I don't think that was the best workmanship, and we're not using any of those, are we?
No.
Okay. Right now, we're only in, working with Wool, which is the architect.
Right.
If we put it out for bid, some of those companies could put in a bid to do the work. And it's up to this board to, once again, decide if, and that's contractors, that's not an architect, can decide which ones they want to go with. Uh, and, and you can deny or, or, or approve at that time. So, and, and, and I gotta jump back even with North Coffee and New Union. North Coffee and New Union was a, was done a little different than, um, the way we're looking anyway because it was about trying to save money and, and truly, I mean, we, we, there was a lot of money saved. There are some things that I agree with you that, that needs to be done a little different. But we didn't have a contract, a project manager. We didn't have a contract, uh, manager. Uh, we had somebody that was in-house that did that.
Yeah, you kept it in-house. You just didn't hire it out for the construction management.
And, and so you, you've got some things that's a little different with that, but I, I, I'm trying to explain. I hope I'm, you're understanding. But it, it, I'm doing what the board's asking me to do.
Yeah.
Mr. Ballard, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I think if we did this two years ago, it's probably time that we look at somebody and get some competitive bids on this stuff, in my opinion. Because we're looking at, uh, giving, we're spending our, you know, our tax dollars here, and we need to look at what, and get some, you know, some more prices and bid it out and look, and see what we've got. We don't, we're not gonna know if we don't bid it out, and if we don't see, you know, or try.
For the architect.
For the architectural part at least, and then we can make a decision, Mr. Harrow.
Mr. Ballard, my recommendation is, before we vote on the project or not, we need to figure out where we're going with our architect, and we'll just kinda...
Yeah, good.
Put this aside till we figure out how we want our, who our architect and engineer to be.
And I would like to say, if this board wants to, to make a motion to put out a R F P and, and to move to looking at for another architect, uh, before we go into any of the projects, I'm fine with you making that motion on this right now. We could, we could go in that direction.
We'll just, we'll just add a step, we'll just add a step from here on. We could just add a step of every single project we do, we have to search out a new architect and engineer for every one of them.
If that's what you want to do.
I, I have to say that I think Wool has been great to work with. If we ask them to come in, no matter how many times we ask them to come, they show up, we can count on them being consistent. I've enjoyed working with them, so I just want to put out a plug for them.
Wool has been great working with. I, I have nothing bad to say about Wool whatsoever. They have been excellent to work with. I, I, I worked well with O L G. I, I told you all that when we were picking the other one. It's what direction you want to go as a board, we'll take off.
And before we move towards any, any more projects, we need to figure out who we're doing business with on architect, architectural and the engineering side.
But I do want to mention with this project, it was talked to, whenever I talked to Wool, I said, we would like for this to be able to be open and used at the first football game next school year. And they said, we've got to get on this quick, uh, because you're looking at drawings, you're looking at bidding it out, you're looking at, uh, giving it to, approving it to a contract, awarding it, and then you're looking at a contractor coming in and start building before August the next year. And that might be something you don't want to, it doesn't matter. I just wanted you to be aware. If that's a goal, then we can't wait on it. If, if we don't decide this today, it's okay. Just understand, there's no way it's gonna be done by August the next year. Which will still be a push.
You need a motion. You need a motion.
We need a motion, and we need a motion if, if we're going to go get architectural bids, then that needs to be the motion. Otherwise, we need a motion. I still haven't heard one that...
Mr. Chair.
Is... Yes, sir.
I move that we accept Wool as the architect and engineer for the project presented to us.
Okay, Gillie has, Mr. Gillie has a motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Peacock Hodge has a second. Okay.
Now we can discuss.
I, I just feel like that we need to get some more bids as, for our taxpayers, and it, again, we're trying to be good stewards of our money. We continuously stay with one company. I've been doing this for forty years too, and it's, it's just, we continuously use this company. It, it don't always, you know, you, you don't ever know what kind of deals that you're gonna get unless you put it out for a bid. It's my opinion.
I think it's only been a year and a half, though. It's not like we've been doing it with them for a decade. I'm looking forward to seeing some finished projects before we kick them out, personally.
Looks like we're kicking them out. We're just getting other bids from other companies to see what we, what we've got.
I have a question. This doesn't have anything to do with the track, does it? That's a different thing, because I, it's my understanding that we can't have track meets here. Is that right?
I was told that we, we can have track meets. It's my understanding there's something with, uh, there, there's...
District and regional.
I, I'm not sure.
But do we have the facilities to do it? I mean, once we're doing all this, I think we need to have it so that we can have track meets here.
Yeah, the only issue is the ledges around it.
I, I think we're having problems with it.
Issues around the perimeter.
That, and so I knew there was something that we needed to do in order to, and that needs to be, that needs to be thought about. I mean, if we're gonna do all this out there, we need to fix it so that every sport can, you know, can participate.
I say we turf the field. And I say we let Wool look at it, because this will only be the second, third project we've let Wool, Wool do. Because up until last year, when board members have only been on here for a year, it was O L G for the history. Wool was the first time we stepped out for the Hickerson and the East Coffee project. That's the first time we stepped outside of the box of who did North Coffee, who did New Union's. This is the first time is Wool. We've still not seen what Wool has been capable of doing.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that. I li- I like their, I'm not disputing about the architect. I was just saying that, that's something to think about.
Oh, yes.
The track needs to be.
Because there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that Mr. Shores didn't go into detail on that create current issues. The one reason you can't use any of that visitors building or whatsoever, we've tried to use the school till the teams destroy the school. Then we've moved down here and took away soccer's room and use it for that, and they about halfway destroy that, which they're gonna do that anyways. But we're talking about teams that we have to play that are ninety-plus of players. You, you, you gotta take them to the gym or you gotta have a facility.
All of it. I agree with her. I think it's awful, but we, we have our visitors come in to it. I'm not, I'm not...
Well, I was just explaining some of the, some of the points that brought this on. And like currently, where we're using the, uh, the soccers down here right beside the home team, the two football teams, you just got the one fence in between them. Every, before the game, after the game, and at halftime, Mr. Shores, he'll, he'll vouch. You have to build a line of people between the two teams because these are, you know, when you get to high school games, there's a lot of talk underneath the bleachers between two teams along that fence. And it's just, it's, it's, we're, we're way beyond that.
I'm personally in favor of Red Astro turf, but... But we have a motion on the floor.
About the layout, current layout now. Do, does the visitor side not have a locker room over there?
The, the visitor side has a locker room, but it is very small and is very dungey looking.
It might, it might be two-thirds that side of this room if you close those partitions.
Wouldn't it make more sense to build a locker room over there for them instead of putting the two teams together on the home side?
That's what we're talking about doing.
Over on the other side?
Yes.
I thought he was saying we were gonna redo it.
Renovating the visitor's side.
Okay, I thought, I understood him.
Renovate it to make it large enough to handle the visitors.
Cause we had to move them down here because every time they went into the bottom of the gym at Raider Academy, they would plug the toilets and potentially flood the
There was always problems.
It was always something.
So they've been in the soccer locker room?
For two years now.
It's probably been two years.
On the home side. So this project will put them back over?
Correct.
Yep.
Got you.
And I love the way the entry looked, the way the, the design.
It wouldn't be exactly that, but it kinda gives you an idea, give you
Yeah, the Tolo, Tolo Homer Games is when we put the most people along the fence underneath the bleachers when the two teams come on.
So Melissa, what is the motion?
So right now, we have the motion made by Mr. Gilli. The motion is to accept Wold as the architect as presented to us. So it's only for the architect.
No, I think I said architect and engineering.
And engineering, okay.
But to move forward with the proposal for
We just need architect?
No, it'd be actually for them to start doing the drawings, right? To start doing all the drawings?
Right.
And, and all the plans.
Okay. If that's all we need, then it just needs to be architectural, not engineering.
Well, it'd be both, it's gonna include both. And they, they do both.
Do you wanna add?
If it's both, you can add the word. Well, but I think I said the word engineering, architect and engineering.
Do you want to fit to do the drawings or?
No, architectural and engineering, just like I said.
I just want to clarify one other thing. On the track, uh, would that come into this, this construction?
Could be.
I mean, because I don't think we need to go back. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it right to begin with. And if we can't have track out there, then
My motion, my motion would approve a percentage of whatever we put forth for them to look at, correct?
I don't think so. I, I, I think your motion is just saying we're gonna continue to stay with Wold. I'm needing to know if you want me to tell them to move forward with this project on the drawings, the
That's exactly what you just told us to do though, and that's the exact motion that I just made, was a motion to accept Wold for architect and engineering of this project as presented.
And?
Being a percentage of the total cost, this ain't part of my motion, but being a part of the, the total cost, we can add to them things such as Ms. Jones said of, look at the track while you're looking at all this.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, we can add to it.
Or, or go the other way, you can add up
Take it away, take something away.
We can take things away, yes.
By the majority of the board.
So that is the motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Cordell?
Hi.
Ms. Yinch?
Hi.
Mr. Hanser?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Mr. Coon?
Uh.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Vote aye, that passes eight to one. All right, next up, budget amendment, uh, one forty-one dash twenty twenty-six ten. And I know Ms. Nelson has been quiet back there all night just waiting for her moment in the spotlight.
Thank you. Um, this budget amendment is to use funds that we've restricted from last year, from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to bring in, to use in our current budget of twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, so at the top, you'll see the list of items that I'm questioning to bring into the budget. So we have some grants, um, grants or some donations that were made to the school district and those are allowed to be carried over each year, um, spent on certain things in our budget, um, like F R C. The first one is, uh, use the best groups. It's used by our district social worker, um, to do, uh, materials and things for the schools. The next two are, um, used by family resource. Um, and then the next, one, two, three, four, five, six items are items in the budget that I can restrict. So, um, if transportation doesn't use all of their money or capital, I can restrict those items in the budget and bring those in, um, to, for the next school year. And then the bottom two, um, are grants that we received, um, that we will, grants or donations that we received that we need to use either in the literacy area, which is what the Coffee County Education Foundation gave us, a grant for all of our academic coaches. And then the Family Resource Center, those were donations that came in to be used on our children, um, need, our children that are in need. Um, and then if you look at the bottom part of the, uh, budget amendment, those are the areas that I'm using those, um, using the, the funds for. Um, and this does affect our, um, restricted fund balance. If you could see the bottom part of the page, it reduces our fund balance by eight eighty-five, two seventy-six and that's our assigned fund balance, which brings it down to seven point one. And I'll take any additional questions if you have them.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve budget amendment one forty-one dash twenty twenty-six dash ten?
I still move.
Ms. Yinch?
I'll second.
Mr. Gilli? Okay, any questions for Ms. Nelson? If not, then, uh, Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell? Vote aye, that passes nine two zero. Okay, budget amendment one forty-one dash twenty twenty-six dash eleven.
Um, this is for a new grant, a new state grant that we, I think Ms. Gardner applied for. Um, this is just the budget amendment to bring that grant into our budget. Um, she's gonna use it for some subs and some professional development.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve budget amendment one forty-one dash twenty twenty-six dash eleven? Mr. Cordell, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Peacock Hodge? Okay, any questions for Ms. Nelson on this? If not, uh, Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. H, Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Aye, that has passed nine two zero. Budget amendment one forty-one dash twenty twenty-six dash twelve. You had a discussion of this one earlier?
Mm-hmm, this is related to the Innovation Committee grants that was discussed earlier and approved by the board. So this budget amendment takes fifty thousand dollars out of our unassigned fund balance and puts it into an account where we can, if, when these grants are awarded, we can, um, write the check from these accounts to the school slash teacher who receives the grant. And it does come from fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, which you see at the bottom of the page, um, reduces it to fourteen point one million.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve this, uh, budget amendment twelve?
I am making the motion to approve this budget amendment twelve.
Okay, second. Mr. Cordell, discussion, questions for Ms. Nelson? If not, uh, Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Vote aye, that passes nine two zero. Budget update.
This is the budget update for, um, through September, through the first quarter. Um, in September, we received four point, four million, one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and four dollars, which was seventeen point two percent of our budget, um, a little over from last year at fifteen point eight two. Um, our total local revenue, which is our, um, taxes and licenses and, uh, sales tax, was seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two, which was seventeen point six of our revenue. The majority of our revenue came from our T S A allotment and our, um, other state grants. Um, that was three, three million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one, which is eighty-one point six percent. And then we had a few other small, um, things come in like our R O T C funding and, and funding from the schools to pay for, um, extracurricular. Um, looking at our expenditure side, for the, um, for the month of September, we spent six point five million, um, for the total for the first quarter was twelve point one, which brought us that twenty, brought us to twenty-two point eight two percent of our budget compared to last year of eighteen point eight. Um, a few items to talk about, um, we paid out our bonuses, our state-funded bonuses in the month of September. That budget amendment hasn't been entered as of September because it didn't get through the commission until October. So you'll see that come through, um, it'll correct some of the items that look over. So like in your seven one, one hundred, seven one two hundred, seven two one three zero and seven three four hundred, it affected all those areas of our budget. So once that budget amendment gets entered for the next month, it'll, um, make those areas look a little better. Also, in our, um, seven two one three zero, um, we paid for Raptor, we went ahead and wrote the purchase order for Raptor. And remember, we took part of that from fund balance and part of that was a state grant. Um, that budget amendment also didn't get approved by the commission until October. So that'll, that'll be, um, that'll show up in here. And then in seven six one hundred, um, we wrote the purchase order for our lotting, our field lotting. That budget amendment also was in the October for the commission. So all of those things will, um, clean up the budget a little bit, uh, for the next monthly report. But so far, our budget's on track and, um, there's no other things to talk about.
Motion to approve the budget update?
So move.
Mr. Gilli?
I'll second.
And Mr. Coon? All right, any questions for Ms. Nelson?
I'm just, go ahead.
I was just noticing on the capital outline, maybe you can just explain a little bit. It said here and used a hundred and ninety-five percent. And year-to-date, we've used a hundred and eighteen percent.
So the hundred and ninety-five percent, that's what we've, um, either encumbered or spent for this school year and that includes the athletic field lighting. Um, so we, I did a budget amendment for that and, um, so when I, I have to take it all the way to the county and so I can't enter it until the county approves it. And so right now, it looks like we're really over budget because we wrote that purchase order for the athletic field light, for the Musco lotting and, um, the C and G, the C and G. Um, and so until that budget amendment hits, this will look really over budget. But once I enter that budget amendment that we did for one point four million, it'll make it the budget back in line. And then last year, you're looking at the hundred and eighteen thou, hundred and eighteen percent. That was because we had, um, we were still working on the I S M building. Um, I S M, I'm sorry, the C T E building that was paid for out of the I S M grant. And at that point last year, the I S M budget has not, had not made it through the commission. Cause I have to do a budget amendment for that each, each year too and it has to go all the way through the commission. So that's why those budgets look out of line.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question.
Okay. All right, uh, any further questions for Ms. Nelson? Not, Ms. Hodge?
Aye.
Mr. Ma, uh, Ms. Matthews, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Ms. Yinch?
Aye.
Mr. Hanser?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
And I will vote aye, that passes nine two zero. All right, next one up, you should have a copy of policy three six zero zero, three point six zero zero. And this had passed, my understanding is this had passed through the policy committee, but there were some issues with the M O U with the teachers that needed to be resolved and that's addressed in here, is that?
Do you want me to take? Are you gonna take it or me take?
I think this deals with, um, a loophole we found in this policy as far as retirees go. Um, I think the policy originally was written in good intent to service the way we're trying to change it to, but it basically changes the, the wording on our retirees. For instance, it used to read that, say, Ms. Westmoreland taught in Coffee County schools for fifteen years. She can go teach somewhere else and as long as she served one more year in our school system, we pay her health insurance until
Age of sixty-five?
Age sixty-five. The way it reads now, um, she'll have to do her last fifteen in Coffee County. That way, we're getting our, our investment out of, and that's, that is a real lucrative educational benefit that most school systems don't offer. But it created, uh, the old policy created a window to jump and take advantage of, of our tax dollars and we're trying to close that loophole. Um, there's also, the big changes is effective today depending on whether you'll pass it or not. There's a date moving forward. So there would be several folks grandfathered in under the old policy and we could not do that by law, we set a date. So it'd be from this date forward.
And, and the difference in this policy, the reason why it's asked to be pulled is because the change from the, what the policy committee saw is the date. There's two dates that's included and that otherwise is the same thing as the, what the policy committee saw.
That was, that was, that was the, the, the question.
Yes, sir.
Because it was, it was approved by the policy committee to, to go forth, but brought before the main board to decide on the date.
And legal counsel advised us to
But there was some questions that were posed to us by Mr. Stein that it was inconsistent with the M O U. Is that, has this been addressed in here?
I do not believe that.
I'm not aware of Mr. Stein's
Questions.
That's the thirty, the M O U says that they, that we have to give them thirty days, uh, for them to look at it prior. This might be a different
Yeah, this is a different
This just says
The parental leave, the next agenda item is the one.
Okay, the next one. We've got three point six oh, so this is a different one.
So I think he, he had pointed out that there were some inconsistencies with the M O U. I think he sent an email to Rita and myself, but you didn't get a copy of that?
Thomas, not on the insurance management. That's on the next agenda item, the parental leave, I believe, is what he's talking about.
No, the way I understood it, it was whenever a new insurance carrier is approved, then the M, the M O U states that they will have thirty days to review it, not just the board approving it. You know, we have to approve it in the end, but they give them, we've got to give them thirty days.
This isn't for a new carrier.
Right, this is not the, this is, um
Hold on, there's
Here, I think
His comment was that
Can, do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion, well, to approve the changes.
I don't think it was three point, it was, cause I looked at, I looked at the policy and it, it stated, it didn't look like it's this one.
Can I make a motion?
You can make a motion.
I make a motion to accept this policy with the changes in red to become the new three point six zero zero Coffee County Board of Education policy.
Okay, do I have a second?
First and final, with a first and final.
Okay, with a first and final, yes.
I'll second that.
Ms. Yinch? Okay, so, discussion. Ms. Jones and I got an email from Mike Stein that says he, I noticed that in board policy three point six hundred, it's on the agenda for Monday, it contains language that contradicts the M O U that the board agreed to in May. This is the part I'm referring to and it's group health, dental vision and life. The board may provide group insurance for all full-time employees. The board may also provide dental vision and life insurance for all full-time employees. And he's comparing it to the beginning of the insurance, insurance section of the M O U that I'm having a hard time reading on my phone, so, um
Well, what does that, what does that state? Because the, the, what we're discussing, what we're discussing right here is if they can leave and come back to Coffee County, work one year and get their full benefits or if they gotta work here their final fifteen before we pay for it for them for, till they're sixty-five. That's, and I don't think that was mentioned in nothing you just read off.
Yeah, that, that's mainly what he was looking at, so, I'm
I'm, I mean, I'm, uh, I certainly think that we need to take it seriously and look at it and make sure that we know what we're voting on because if the M O U states something different than what we're passing, we're gonna have to go back to it. Um, we're gonna see if I can find it too.
Mr. Hargrove and Melissa and the rest of the board Mr. Hargrove and Melissa and the rest of the board too, so.
Okay, it's, uh...
That's fine, if there's, if there's something in the MOU that says that we can't change the terms.
Okay, this is what he, he is saying, that each full-time educator shall be eligible to participate in Coffee County's health coverage. All participating professional employees shall receive written, this is what, what is in the MOU, they shall receive written, um...
Notification.
Yes, I couldn't, that, in other words, they've got, they, we've got to provide them written notification of any change.
But we're not changing their insurance.
Thirty days. I know, but with the policy doesn't state that, I know we're not changing insurance, but if we do, we've got to, it's gotta be in our policy that we'll give them thirty days to review it before we change.
Well, that's fine, but...
Does it say in the MOU that it's required to be in our policy, or that we do it? And if it's that we do it, then if it's in the MOU, we have to follow the MOU, which means we do it, it might not be in the policy.
Well, I think, I think the question here is if we do any changes to the insurance that we provide, the insurance provider.
Yes, and it's like I was talking earlier...
We're not talking about changing the insurance provider.
But if we do, and that was my question, if we do, that was my question to the other board meeting, you know, that the board has to approve it, and I did not realize that the MOU also said that we had to let them have thirty days to review it before we approved any changes.
To the health dental or vision.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, that's probably in there, and that's probably so, but what we're talking about in this policy has nothing to do with who and what we're providing, it's just our policy of dates of who's eligible.
I mean, we're still providing dental vision and life insurance for all full-time...
And we haven't changed it, and we've not asked to change it.
Well, we just made the change, but it was this year in September. It was, we voted, we had it, we had to renew, we had to renew our dental vision and life.
He came here and told everybody that what the changes were, so we did change it.
If we did that...
What do we, what do, what do, what do you mean? We did change what? We, I mean, we did change that, I mean, we're talking about two different things here.
We didn't change carriers, we just re, we kept everything we currently had.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking, but we're talking about up here on this board, two different things. I don't know where we're bleeding them back together here. We're not talking about the carrier and what kind of insurance and all that stuff, what this policy, if you'll read that policy and read it here, we are just discussing the loophole, for the biggest part of it, the loophole of you can go work for, here for fifteen years, then go work for the City of Manchester until your final year, come here and our tax dollars and our dollars will pay for the remainder of your...
Well, what about this, if we look at, I mean, we need to, we need to do this on a first and final tonight, these changes, but if we then send it back to the policy committee to look at how it aligns with the MOU, so, would that work?
I don't think the policy committee gets into the MOU business. I think that'd be the executive committee.
Ultimately, if it's in the MOU that we do this, we do this. It doesn't have to be in policy.
Okay.
Unless it's in the MOU, you have to put it in your policy that you do this. No, the, the MOU says we have to let them have thirty days, then we let them have thirty days.
If we're changing, if we're changing...
I think it ought to be signed.
The benefits and stuff, we're not talking about that. The motion on the floor is to accept this policy that is dealing with, Tom Lee, it.
Qualifying.
Qualifying.
I'm fine with that.
So Robert, we're not looking at accepting every red change that was made here on this policy.
Oh...
Because there was some changes made to, like, the spouse's eligibility, as I recall.
The what now?
The spouse's eligibility.
Yeah, so that was a change that was made by the board in twenty sixteen. I have the board documents from that meeting. That was done near that time, and that should have been put in our policy at that time, and it never, it never was. And so we're just trying to, when we cleaned up this policy, we're trying to add that to it because that is what the board passed at that time.
Okay, so that's already been passed in our...
Yeah, so that's what we've been following.
Yes, yes, yes. Sorry, took me a minute to catch up to you.
We've been performing, that's been in operation for over a decade.
And I think Mr. Schors makes a good point, you know, the MOU is the MOU, and we gotta follow that, so they, they need thirty days' notice, they get thirty days' notice, so it doesn't need to be in policy, so, good point. All right, so the motion on the floor is to accept the changes on a first and final reading. Okay, Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Hi.
Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
Ms. Yentch.
Hi.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
Ms. Jones.
No.
Nope, okay. Uh, Ms. Hodge.
Hi.
I will vote aye, that passes eight two one. All right, the next one up, and you should also have this somewhere buried in your pile of paperwork here, is parental leave. This one also needs to be passed tonight on a first and final, so I'm not, Mr. Hargrove or...
Ms. April will.
I'll talk if I can talk. So this used to be part of our FMLA policy, and this, so I, every quarter, I have to do a reimbursement, so this is the six weeks that's paid by the state, state department. So they reimburse us for anybody that's licensed, that's, that works with us, that goes out on six weeks of leave. I have to submit that reimbursement to the state department. So they changed our, the way our reimbursements were structured this, this year, and they make us supply a board policy that shows where our policy is as a board. And so they no longer would let me use that FMLA policy because it was, had other items in it, and they told me I had to have a standalone policy. So this is to break, break out the policy from the FMLA policy to make this policy a standalone policy, and it can, and there was a few things that changed in the law that we had to address in this policy that was not addressed in our current policy. So this new policy just addresses what the law currently says and takes it, and makes it standalone policy. And the reason we're asking for a first and final is because I wasn't able to do the quarter one reimbursement from the state department, and so I cannot do a reimbursement until we get a final policy that stands alone.
So this is a new policy?
Yes.
This is a new policy.
Okay, so that's why it doesn't have a number on it, okay.
Ms. Beth and Rita will remember that this is just one that we just shot to this board because it was a new policy.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Matthews.
I'll second.
Mr. Cordell, okay. Any discussion or questions for April on this? Um, no, then, Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Uh, Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
Ms. Yentch.
Hi.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
Ms. Jones.
Ah.
Ms. Hodge, and that passes nine two zero. Okay, the last item on our agenda, action agenda anyway, is the approving the TISA accountability report that Mr., or Dr. Cornelius had presented to us earlier, and so I need a motion to approve this, and then we can ask any questions.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Gilli, check it.
My second, the motion.
Ms. Hodge, okay. All right, any questions for Dr. Cornelius on this?
I just have a quick question because I'm unfamiliar with the process. This goes to who?
This will go in, that's in our E Plan now, you'll be able to hit some details to TISA.
Okay, got you. That's a lot of work.
So what do, what will happen if we don't meet these goals by twenty twenty-eight?
Now, the only one that's tied to legislation is the first.
Okay.
And that's the, that's the third grade.
Yep, ELA.
And it's conjecture, I don't know, and I don't know what they'll, I don't know what they'll do, I know that there's some restructuring of some of the metrics, and right now, the way I feel is, because they're in a crunch too, you know, it's, who knows, who knows?
What did they say? They, what, did, what, at one time, wasn't it said that they would defund us?
One time there was mentioned that if you don't, if you don't meet your twenty-five twenty-six, that there might be some kind of, you know, penalties or such, I've heard anything about that in the last year as well, with TISA first hand foul.
But it's kind, but that's something we need to think about because the way they are defunding public schools.
It is, I think exactly, and I just think we need to do the best that we possibly can, throw a lot of diligence into improving all of them that we, you know, that we do.
Particularly that third grade.
Third grade has a lot of eyes on it across the, across the state.
I'd say everybody's in the same position, almost.
Yes, and I know here in Coffee County, we know the emphasis has been placed to, okay one and two, to help them, so that by the time you don't just put everything and wait till third grade and roll your dice, you start, you know, investing and trying to get things done in K one and two, wait before they get to the third grade, which is good.
Dr. Cornelius, do you mind sharing why this report's a little different this year?
What you mean?
Where it's posted?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. E Plan is where, E Plan is where they wanted it this year, but that's how they're, that's how they're storing all of them, which they might say they just decided to put it in E Plan instead of the...
Okay.
So it's a little new, it's a little different format, and that's kind of where we're heading.
Got you.
So we've got to increase thirty something per, almost thirty percent.
Well, if you've got, we need to move from third to thirty-five, to I think fifty-one five, so about eighteen percent.
Six, okay, sixty-one five on your, your five.
Goal number one, we've met, we've gotten thirty-three point five this year, and I think we need to increase it to fifty-one point five, because I think that's the lock-in twenty-five, twenty-six goal, and so that's gonna be eighteen, eighteen percent. And like I told you, one school did it, you know, by, by themselves, one school did it last year, so.
What school was that?
That was Hickerson.
That's great.
Hickerson achieved that last year on their, on their third grade.
All right, any further questions for Dr. Cornelius? All right, we're voting to approve the TISA accountability report. Mr. Coon.
Ah.
Mr. Gilli.
Ah.
Mr. Cordell.
Ah.
Ms. Yentch.
Hi.
Mr. Hansert.
Ah.
Ms. Jones.
Ah.
Ms. Hodge.
Hi.
Ms. Matthews.
Hi.
That will vote, passes nine two zero. All right, that is, that concludes the agenda items, so now we have the items for discussion, and let's start with Mr. Coon down there.
At this time, I don't have anything.
Okay, Ms. Matthews?
Um, I, I have one question. It's not really even anything related to the board meeting, but it was something I was asked about, my last couple of days. The curriculum that we have here related to healthy boundaries, are you guys familiar with that? I think it's a secondary, you may know.
Yeah, it's...
Yes, okay. Um, it, how could I get a copy of that where I could review it and look at it?
I can get it from Decisions, Choices, and Options is the, the organization that comes in, so I can get that.
Okay, all right. So is that taught by, who is that taught by, a certified teacher, or?
No, oh, no.
It's, it is taught by, by that organization. They send, they send folks to cover that material.
Does that, is it all year, or is it just?
No, and we usually have them for a three-day period.
Got you.
They come in, it's their seventh graders, and a two-day period for them to come in, it's their eighth graders.
Is that the same thing that the, the form comes home to the parents to sign off? Okay.
Yes.
All right, I didn't know if that was something totally different, um...
It's been used for many years.
Yeah, and it's like a three-day thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Ms. Matthews, they also go into the Raider Academy to do a program, and also at the high school, they do more around like parenting and buddy thing, it's just, they do different programs at the different levels.
Okay, all right. If you don't care, would you send me a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's really all I had.
Jennifer?
If you have not been to an elementary school basketball game yet, I recommend it. It's a lot of fun. Those kids are just, it's very entertaining, and they're actually pretty good. It's very exciting, so. And also, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, everyone out there in the world, if you don't have anywhere to go, you're invited to my house. Send me an email and I'll tell you the address and what time, and I mean it. And I have a lot of weird kids, and I'm strange too, so as long as you're okay with that, then come on to my house.
Hmm.
I mean it, I'm serious.
We were talking about what to do for Thanksgiving.
Come on, Tom, I'm a really good cook.
I'll bet you are.
I am.
I know you are, too. Okay, Ms. Jones?
I'm not gonna ask everybody.
I hope people show up, I would be so excited, I really would.
Um, no, the, the only thing I have, I have two things. One thing is concern, another thing is, is something really good, but on these bus reports, every time we get them, I, I, I look at them and I think, these kids wait till they get out of school and they just go crazy, it looks like. And I'm wondering if there was, if, if these, if these kids were referred to the counselor, something that if they knew that they were getting written up on the bus, that they're gonna have to go to the counselor at that school for, for what they did, and, and the counselor say, look, this is what is reported you did on the bus, let's see what's going on here, because it's, it's, it's very concerning. And some of them are funny, but some of them are very scary.
Principals, we stay pretty consistent with the punishment.
I mean, do they go to counselors? I mean, some of these, it, it, to me, it looks like some of these need to be, be sent a counselor.
So, so there, there would be some occasions, just off the top of my head, I'm not thinking of incident, but there would definitely be some occasions where that might happen. In every instance, an assistant principal is going to, you might say, counsel them. Of course, they're not licensed professional counselors, because they're gonna talk with them about the behavior.
Right.
Um, you know, how to avoid that in the future, what shouldn't have happened, you know, things like that. Um, and, and yes, there would be some times when a counselor would get involved.
Yeah, because I look at this and I'm thinking, the counselor needs to be working with...
Yes, ma'am, and that awesome innovative committee, we're talking about dads and moms on buses.
That would be awesome.
Uh, talk with these transportation supervisor, and we're looking for a program to train, we're looking at the school inn, the hoops you have to jump through to become vested and get, I mean, you're not talking about all the buses either, you're talking about a handful of buses.
Right, and probably the same.
Right, but we're talking about, uh, trying to make that investment and get some other adults on, on the bus to assist with that, hopefully those numbers will start dropping.
Because when you see it in writing, it really, all of a sudden, you think, oh, my goodness, but, uh, but I'll have to say this again, New Union still didn't have any, knock on wood.
They don't have many bus riders.
Pressure on you.
How, how many bus riders?
They don't have a lot of bus riders, do they?
We only have four buses.
Okay, so, that's the difference, too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I wanted to say, I went out to Deerfield the other night, and that school is so pretty, that's why I said that I love that architect, I don't know who it is, but anyway, Ms. Yentch, you need to be commended for this, those, that, those art programs are wonderful, and I'm sure all the elementary people would say that, and, and I hope we can get it into the middle school because those kids are so excited and ha, at every grade level, and I'm thinking, wouldn't that be great if that could continue on into middle schools, particularly the ones that are, are, you know, have that affinity to the arts, and some, and it just gets kind of shut down after elementary, of course, we're just now starting in elementary, but that's such a, it was really enlightening to see that, and, and Happy Thanksgiving, just don't go to my house.
Come to my house instead, I mean it.
Jennifer's up?
I would be so excited, y'all have no idea.
I just want to say that I, you know, it's nice to see all the principals that we've got coming out and, you know, just hearing about all the things that are going on, that is just awesome, you know, so I really appreciate that, the, and I know it, for some of you, it's a challenge to get over here, I know coming from Deerfield, it's gotta be, you know, a challenge, but really appreciate that. I know coming from Deerfield, it's gotta be, you know, a challenge, but, uh, really appreciate that. And, you know, just hearing what's going on is, is exciting. Mr. Hansert?
I'd like to, uh, thank Leah for one. Uh, got to go out and, uh, go on a tour of Deerfield. I haven't had a chance to go, but, uh, since Mr. Schumer gave, gave me the month off, got to go out and do some things. And, uh, we, uh, got to go out to Hickerson, uh, got to see, uh, go out there and read to some of the first graders out there. Got to read to, uh, Jennifer's daughter. Got to go to the Raider Academy, uh, appreciate Ms. Sellers and, uh, uh, Ms. Carden out there, you know, to, you know, letting us go out there and, uh, and, uh, again, you know, it's like everybody else. Wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Ms. Hinch?
Reed, it's my dream that every elementary will have their own art teacher that they don't have to share. Because I really love what, going out and seeing those art teachers work. So, yeah, thank you. I just get excited when I hear all the principal reports, and I hear about everything that's going on in our school system. And then I see the write-up about our teachers in the paper. It just makes me so proud to, to see all of what our school's doing. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the principals. Thank you to everyone who's working to make our system so great. I am really grateful. And Mr. Hargrove, thank you for, um, your reports every week.
Yes.
And thank you for just the encouraging spirit that you constantly give. And I see you giving away, um, kudos all the time, that you might could hang some of them onto yourself, but you always give them away. And I appreciate that. And, and I love what you do, uh, Mr. Shores, with all of our, um, new projects. You've really put your heart into them. You did, you were talking to me about this the other day, and you were so passionate and excited about it. So that's one thing, one way I know that our schools are gonna stay looking good, is because you're passionate about that. So anyhow, that's all.
Mr. Cordell?
I think our system, our teachers, our staff, Mr. Hargrove, Mr. Shores, this whole team that we have. I want to thank you for your passion and what you're doing for Coffee County's schools for now, and you're sowing seeds for the next generation. Thank you so much. And Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Gilli?
We're heading there. Just like Mr. Cordell just said, we're, we're on the right track. We're moving through. We've got a lot of stuff to do. Ms. Frida, just to make you feel a little better about that, and talking about the bus stuff, the next work session, that is, the bus conduct policy, if you'll remember from the policy committee, that's gonna be there to get a real big overhaul, hopefully. So we're gonna have a lot of say in some of that. That's coming up in the next policy meeting. Uh, I look forward to seeing everybody at the end of the week at the TSBA convention. At some point, I, I hope we get a, uh, uh, we'll have a pretty good little team-building experience. And, uh, that should be, uh, that should be fun. That's all I've got.
All right, uh, committee reports. I know we've had a number of committees, so, Mr. Hargrove.
We talked about the, um, the innovation committee. The policy committee built it through twenty-three policies the other night. I think it was even better than the original. Appreciate all those folks that served on that committee. It was very organized, they had great dialogue, and it was very, very productive. Who have I missed? Mr. Shores, Capital Project, how's your group?
We're good. Prac, uh, Capital Projects Committee, you saw one of them come up today. There's gonna be a few more coming up a little bit later on, so I think they're doing well.
I love our Ca, our Capital Product, uh, the capital projects that we're doing just really excites me. I think they're good investments for our children and their families, safety-wise, educationally. It's just, those are good investments.
All right, and next up, we have our student ambassador reports. So we get to decide who wants to go first. And tell us a little bit about yourself, you know, and then we can give you a report.
My name is Karen Tinsener. I'm a senior representative this year for our student government at the high school. I'm also, um, on the volleyball team, and I am part of the Athletic Leadership Council that we started this year. Um, so I'll be talking about the sports at our school. So a few weeks ago, our cross-country wrapped up their season. And this past Friday, one of the members, Thompson Low, went and competed at the championship in Memphis. And then last Friday as well, our dance team went to state and competed there. Last Tuesday, our softball girls put on their annual kickball tournament, and the senior class won. And then swim tomorrow night at five fifteen, they will, uh, compete against Swanee in Franklin County. And then sadly, football ended their season with a loss against Shelbyville. And then our new club, Archery, that we started, um, is led by Jocelyn Gilde and Addison Westmoreland. And that's all we have for sports. If y'all have any questions?
I have a question, Reed.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us more about the Athletic Leadership Council?
Uh, yes. It is led by Coach D, Coach Taylor, at, uh, the high school. I'm not really sure, like, what the, like, who, like, brought the idea up. I'm assuming it was Coach D, but we meet, we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, but we meet, I try to, we try to meet once a month, and we just talk about good examples of leadership, bad examples of leadership, uh, what we as like seniors, juniors, sophomores, like, I mean, there's a whole, like, group of us, a whole classroom full, that just go and talk about, like, what it means to be a leader and how we can be good examples to everyone, not just on our teams, but around the school. Because people see us as athletes and see us as leaders on the court. And then if we're not leaders off the court and in classrooms, they kind of look at us, and they're like, well, like, you're kind of being a hypocrite if, like, we're preaching this, like, on the court, and then we're not doing it in classrooms, or we're not showing that.
I love that. That's fun.
Nice. Thank you.
I have a question for.
Yes, ma'am.
You're a senior this year. Where do you think you're going after this?
Um, I'm undecided as to like which school I'm going to, but I plan to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering with hopes to focus on like the sports performance equipment side of that. And so it'll be like the, uh, I guess, utility-like side of it of, uh, like, I know our football team uses Titan as a brand, and it'll track like their stats throughout, like, their practices. So it's like their, like, it'll track their speed, their heart rate, like, all, all sorts of stuff like that. So I want to get into like that design and, um, engineering of that.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
I love how comfortable you are up here. You did a great job.
Next up?
Hi, my name is Phoenix Thomas. I'm a senior at Coffee County High School. I'm the senior rep, and I'm president of Skills USA alongside, um, getting my degree at Montlo right now. For theater, you know, our, um, students have worked very hard to put on our play, The Lion Witch in the Wardrobe, which was available to watch the seventh through the ninth, and is available again this weekend, um, the fourteenth through sixteenth, um, at seven P M. On Friday and Saturday, and two P M. on Sunday. Keeping with tradition, this Thursday, um, Renaissance art holders, um, at our school can go and watch an in-school play performance of it. For fundraising, we started our fundraising period for a lot of different clubs. FFA has recently won their parliamentary procedure competition, and are headed to the next level of this competition on Thursday. Their nursery and landscape will be going to state this year. And for Beta, they are also preparing for state, which is later this month. For Skills USA, we've started a toy drive, which is, um, incorporating a lot of different clubs. It's a competition. We are engaging with, um, Beta, the Art Club, SGA, HOSA, TAB, Choir, Interact, and DECA to just raise as many toys as possible for local donations. DECA and FBLA, um, they went to the Titans Learning Lab, um, the twenty-eighth of last month. And DECA is going to district competition later this month. FBLA, DECA, HOSA, and Skills USA also recently attended the Middle Tennessee CTO, CTSO Fall Leadership Training in Lebanon, which was really great. I think we all came back with some really interesting ideas for how to better our clubs and help our members. And that's all I have.
Good question. What are skills?
Skills USA is a, um, club that's designed to help people in, um, like, CTE pathways, enhance their abilities, and be ready to, um, go into their profession.
Oh, very cool. So what do you plan after?
Um, I'm going into architectural, um, design.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job for innovation.
Get a bid.
We should.
Hello, my name is Ella Arnold. I'm also a senior at the high school. I play softball and golf. And I'm the treasurer for Student Government Association, and I'm also part of the Athletic Leadership Group. I'm going to talk about, um, what SGA has done recently. So this past week, we helped our nurse in the food drive. We collected over one thousand nine hundred sixty-eight food items to serve our local community, which is a, a great number. All donations were dropped off, uh, to the SGA table during all three lunch periods. We re-talied all of our items for the week. For each item donation, the students receive one point to go towards their homeroom. Uh, the homeroom with the highest number of points at the end of the food drive got a pizza party. And the homeroom in that one was Ms. Stewart's homeroom, so they will have a pizza party. We are currently working on some fun ideas, um, and games for this upcoming winter, just to help just keep kids excited and just to come. And, um, a couple of weeks ago, we put on our Renaissance recess, which helps, uh, celebrate our students. So all red card people, which is all grades of A on their semester report card, and then black card, which is all As or Bs on their report card, and then silver card, which is the, during the semester, the GPA improves, um, by a point five or more from the previous semester. And then lastly, white card, which is no absence, tardies, checkouts, or discipline referrals. That's all I have.
I love that pizza parties are still an incentive.
Yes, I love it. Yes. Well, I think it makes it fun, because like, a big thing that I like about it is like, we're still kids, and we still enjoy things like that.
Enjoy it while you can.
And where do you plan to go after high school?
Um, I'm still undecided, but I would like to major in extra science and then continue on to occupational therapy, and hopefully get my doctorate in that.
Oh, wow.
Reach for the stars, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the time you spent coming down here and sit through one of these meetings.
And they're still smiling.
The non-stop excitement.
Need like extra credit.
But we really appreciate you coming down and sharing with us. All right, next up is the director's report.
Mr. Ballard, once again, our student ambassadors have swindled several great points of mine. Touche, ladies. Coffee County Fine Arts Night has been scheduled and set for Thursday, February nineteenth, from six to eight. Please don't write this down. I'll share this document with you at the end of the week. I appreciate Ms. Ledbetter setting this up. That will take place at Coffee Mill from six to eight on February nineteenth. You have a folder, uh, that has information in it, and the information that we left in there will be dis, uh, discussed at next week's work session. One's an organizational chart. I have somebody that I respect very, very much share with me the origin of a organizational chart and its biblical book of Exodus. Interesting. We'll have that, uh, re, uh, redone organizational chart along with some teacher and staff assignments with those. And we'll also be providing job descriptions for yours review next week. There's also gonna be information in regards to our girls' flag football team. That way, we can make a great decision in December, moving forward with that. We have a few Excel sheets with cost per player and organizational cost. I hope we can talk more about fundraising at next week's work session. We've, uh, already talked about bus volunteers. Mr. Anderson may, uh, sit, sit a spell with us and talk about middle school conference he attended last week. We also, uh, will talk about registration day or that first two-hour day of school. Not required to do it, but I want your opinion on, on some of that. Hopefully, we can, uh, add a few more SMART goals to our five-year plan. In fact, we've already done that through tonight's meeting, just don't know it yet. And we'll be able to discuss all those things at next week's work session. There are a ton of great things going on in our schools. Sometimes I feel like I get bogged down in the office, and these people are great as well, our office people are, but are as well. But if, to get out in the school and, and see what these kids are doing in art class, or volleyball, or golf, or whatever it is they're doing, it, it's really remarkable, and it makes it all worthwhile. So I am yielding the floor to Capital Projects.
You don't want to quit yet?
Nope, I'm better.
Capital Projects update.
Okay, uh, first of all, I want to correct myself. Earlier, I was calling it RFP, but it's actually RFQ. And that's Request for Qualifications. So I, I knew that didn't sound right, but it's Request for Qualifications when you're searching out somebody for a service with. Okay, going through some of the Capital Projects, first of all, we are still working on the, uh, access controls at East Coffee and New Union. We ran into problems with the doors. We've got the doors taken care of. Now we're ready to move into the, the actual access controls. And these are going into the actual offices. This isn't coming into the building or going on in from the, the glass bowl into the main part of the building. But, but we're, we're able to now move forward from that direction. Uh, safety bollards are, are finished at Raider Academy High School in Cos. Starting the process, assembling what we need at our elementary schools. If you don't know what the, the bollards are, those are the, the poles that keeps somebody from being able to drive through a door at, at the school. And, and like I said, secondaries are done. We're ready to now, and also, middle school's finished. That, that is actually our first one. So we're, we're getting ready to start on the elementaries. Uh, Hickerson, uh, bathroom partitions, uh, the bathrooms in the ninety-five, well, it's actually ninety-six edition, went ahead, uh, uh, Ms. Crabtree has asked about those for a couple of years. Been putting off on a few things. Decided to go ahead and move forward. Ms. Peacock, I've had you talk to your kids, and they said, we can't use those restrooms. They're working on them.
It was rough. I was there painting the other day, and I kept trying to go to the restroom, and I couldn't because they're always in the one that was open, but they were very excited.
So they, they are completely getting re, re, completely going through and, and painted. Ceiling tile, sinks, partitions, just everything updated and, and made nice. The ones that was in there are starting to get in bad shape, so it is time. At the, also at the football stadium, uh, bathrooms, restrooms, uh, work is being done there. It's gonna take just a little bit longer to getting those taken care of, uh, redoing the floors, and the floors are in pretty bad shape. So, uh, that's gonna probably delay us just a little bit, but there's nothing going on at the football stadium, so we can, we've got time. Raider Academy fire-rated door lights, uh, those were, I think, got installed during, uh, fall break. Actually, I know they did. During fall break, uh, we had to do that in the science rooms. They had fire-rated doors, didn't realize it. So when we put these door lights in, they had to be fire-rated as well. Uh, that's been taken care of. And I think that's it, unless anybody's got any questions about anything to sum here up. Trying to cover everything that I've not already covered many times, so.
Why would what we did with WOOL not be a request for price? Because that's what we approved was the price, not the qualifications. We know they're qualifications.
Request for qualification is what we did about a year and a half, like, I think, as Ms. Hodge said.
Well, it was price that we approved, so it would have been RFP.
Yeah, right. But it was RFQ, which is the Request for Qualifications. That's what you actually call it when you go for, uh, getting an engineer or some service. And, and that's the reason why now, if you're looking for a price and you're doing that part of it, they're gonna give you that part, but really, we're looking at their qualifications.
Well, I'm looking at their price, because the qualifications better be in the specs.
And the price as well. But that's what it's about.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, one more thing. We did miss a committee meeting. Uh, we had safety committee meeting, which was a really good, uh, meeting, I felt like. Uh, Ms. Peacock Hodge was here at it. I don't know if she wants to, well, we can't really share anything much out of it, but we had a good turnout, and, and it turned out well. Uh, anything else would you like to put on it?
No, I was just calling.
No, I don't get no, I didn't know. I didn't know until two days later, and I called Melissa. Why, are you over here?
I think there are good things coming.
Thank you.
There are lots of good things on the way. It was a great meeting. It was very insightful. I thought you both did well with what you presented, so I was glad to be there.
Melissa gets the final word.
Well, so while everybody's together, um very short time here between now and the end of the year, we need to get an innovation committee meeting in and a director's evaluation.
I'm not on neither. Can I go?
We've got to start. We've got to start. So does anybody, I mean, can we do it like the first week of December? So innovation is uh Scott, Holly, Beth, and uh Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'm I'm good that week, so.
Um I'll be gone that week, Melissa.
Okay.
If you need to still hold it, then go ahead.
Um can you do it the night after uh the Tuesday after the board meeting?
I will actually miss the next board meeting. I've gotta help my mom out, so.
Okay.
Let me tell you the dates. I'll be gone. It'll actually be a two-week period. I have to leave out Saturday after Thanksgiving and
I know what else she's fixing to ask.
While she's looking, director's evaluation is Ms. Frida, Scott, Gary, and Thomas. When can we do that? We've got to get on that, cause we've got to get that started. These are, these are starting to roll in.
Christmas dinner.
Oh, Christmas dinner is uh December the fifth at five o'clock.
And that's after a game, right? Or the same night as a home basketball game?
Oh, I have no idea.
Unless I'll be back at the fifteenth.
Yeah, and it and that's the stroll, the Manchester stroll, everything.
Can we do December the fifteenth for the innovation committee?
I think that would work for me.
December the fifteenth, is that a Monday?
Yeah.
That'll be fine for me.
I'll think about y'all.
Can you go, Holly?
December fifteenth?
Uh I I don't know. I'll have to look and see. I'm looking now. I can get back with you.
When did you say her dinner was?
Uh da- dinner is December the fifth at five o'clock.
We have a basketball game, but it's away. We play York.
Oh, um okay.
It's a way?
Cheerleaders don't go.
It's a way game.
That's why I said no, but yeah, they do play.
Scott, did you say a way game?
Yes.
York and it's a long ways off. York Agriculture where John Bush is.
Yeah, that'd be him.
It's a long way.
What time is the Christmas dinner?
Five o'clock.
Okay, that might give people time to go for the stroll up around the square.
Oh, is that that night?
Like December the second. That will be Frida, Scott, Gary, and Thomas.
That works. I'm fine.
December the second. What time can everyone be here? We start it at three, three-thirty?
Three-thirty, be good.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, and Holly, did you check on?
Uh what was that date again?
Uh December the fifteenth.
On Monday? Yeah, I guess I can do that.
What time can everyone be here that day? Can we start at three-thirty or do we need to go later?
I'm fine with that.
Three-thirty's fine for me.
That's alright.
Okay, alright, that'll give me something I can get going with on and it that worked out.
Alright.
Real quick, Mr. Frankfurt, thank you very much for the uh, thank you, the email. Uh very, very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for consideration.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you. Very nice, very nice email.
Okay, motion to dismiss. Oh.
Last thing, the bus driver breakfast. I know a lot of you came to it last year. It's on December the fifth. Supervisors and principals will be there at six-thirty, but
Okay.
usually bus drivers start coming in about seven.
So that's the same day as the Ford Christmas dinner?
Yeah, Kelvin was cutting a ham without gloves on.
I'm gonna be tired.
Or a hairnet.
Alright. Motion to dismiss.
I'd like to kill my back.
I so moved.
Mr. Coon, Mr. Hanson, all in favor, say aye.